Any second now, we will begin.
Oh, I'm watching.
This is my grandson.
Oh.
It's one of those moving.
It must be his iPhone thing.
There you go. Okay. Good evening. People coming in, take their seats. Thank you. All right. I'm going to convene our regular Select Board meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. John, was the meeting properly warned?
Yes, it was. Liz.
Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda? Oh, yes, we do have an item. Yes, John.
Yes, we had a request this afternoon if you would mind moving the item nine C Spark Street mural project public art application from tonight to your May sixth meeting, but we could send it to the Agenda Committee for consideration on that if you want.
I don't think anybody minds.
That's okay with me.
I'd like to object.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, very good. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March twentieth and April first?
So moved.
All right. All Select Board members in favor of approving the minutes of March twentieth and April first, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Very good. That passed five zero. Chair's remarks. I have none. Oh, yes, I do have. Silly me. I have those remarks about rules and regulations because they're necessary. But I have shortened it from last time. This is a meeting of the Select Board. It's a limited public forum, open to the public, not just residents of Brattleboro. Members of the public should raise their hand to be acknowledged by me, the chair. Comments are directed to me, and I will either answer myself or direct the inquiry to the town manager or other appropriate party. People will be called on a first come, first served basis as determined by the chair. Comments may not be considered if it is not germane to the topic at hand. The chair has the right to protect against repetitive or non-german comments and to make sure that a variety of viewpoints are heard. A member of the public may only speak more than once on the same agenda item, time permitting, with the consent of the chair, and only after every other member of the public has been given an opportunity to speak. Order must be maintained. No booing, no clapping, no cheering. Public will speak for three minutes, and I have many thanks to Seth to direct our new timing mechanism. Let's see. What else? Let's see. Electronic participation. Any Zoom bombing, et cetera, will be immediately eliminated, and again, I thank Seth for that. And last, but certainly not least, no party, representative of a party, witness, or speaker shall be permitted to make personal attacks on another speaker, a member of the Select Board, or any person whatsoever. No person shall be permitted to interrogate another speaker or any person present at the hearing without that person's consent and without the permission of the presiding officer given in advance of any such questions. That ought to do us for now. So, John, do you have comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. Liz, on behalf of Fire Chief Simons and the town, I'd like to thank the Police Department, DPW, Groundworks, and Tri Park Co-op Housing, as well as all of the firefighters for the outstanding efforts on the recent fires. The police officers were on scene immediately, working as a team, assisting the firefighters with ensuring that properties were vacated. They also controlled traffic during all three of the fires and assisted with investigations. DPW stayed for the duration of each of the fires, and they were there to make sure that there was water available throughout the incidents. A Tri Park representative was on scene of the fire at one oh seven, one oh nine Glenn Street, assisting with information and assisting the displaced residents. A representative from Groundworks was on scene at the fifty-two South Main Street fire and ensured that the building was vacated. She was very patient and worked with the fire department until we could ensure the safety of the building and allow people back in. So, really grateful for everyone's working together as a team on those fires. To those who are still not in compliance with the business licenses, the fee is currently seventy-five dollars. That fee will have an additional hundred dollars on it at May first, bringing the total license fee to one seventy-five. So if you want to help out the budget, just linger on your business license, and maybe we'll do a little better there. Finally, the Water Department's annual water quality report for two thousand and twenty-four is now available at brattleboro.gov under Water Supply, if you search underwater supply. And printed copies of that water quality report are at the DPW office, as well as at the Town Clerk's Office downstairs and the Treasurer's Office, if you're interested. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, Select Board members, do you have comments or committee reports? No, very good. All right, public participation. And again, this is comments from the public, three minutes a pop, as long as it is not an agenda item. Ivan?
Thank you. Ivan Hennessy, District Eight. I'd like to start by thanking everyone who showed up a couple of weekends ago to demonstrate support for the constitutional order, rule of law, due process, all that sort of stuff. But I think that we all have to ask ourselves a question, if those are things that we value. And I'm going to ask the question, gonna pause for a moment. I'm hoping everyone will answer it themselves, and then I'll ask a follow-up question. And the question is, do we expect the Brattleboro Police Department to stop ICE from kidnapping people on the streets of Brattleboro? So I think we've all answered that the same way. And in light of that answer, we have to ask ourselves the follow-up question, which is, what are we as a community going to do to protect people in Brattleboro from this violent gang? It's not something that's going to be addressed here. It's not something that the Select Board can do anything about. It's something that we have to deal with as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seth? Very good. Mr. Ozer?
Hello. I think you can hear me?
Yes.
Bob Ozer, Brattleboro. So at last public participation, there was a discussion or an argument made that one could not separate out EMS from fire in terms of expenses. And so I sent the board memo, which addresses the cost data program at the Center for Medicare and Medicaid. And so, in fact, there is a program for that, and it has been in effect for a couple of years. They just issued a report the end of last year. So it can be done. There's even a template in the packet. If anybody wants that, they can reach out to me, and I can send it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. DeGray is next. Mr. DeGray?
Hey, yes, here I am. Thank you. Dick DeGray, District Eight. First, a request to the board members. When you're speaking, can you lean into the mic? Or BCTV needs to turn up the volume. Liz, when you started the meeting, I could hardly hear you, but then when you read the rules of the meeting, I could hear you clearly. So I've had that problem.
Thank you.
And secondly, is there something else going on in the background?
Seth, can you isolate that? You, Dick?
Can I reclaim my time? Secondly, if John could give an update on the Transportation Center project, I'd like an update because I, there has been talk that the project, the new board members might have an idea of changing that project. So I'd like to know how far along we are, if any changes have been made to it, and if the board is in fact interested in not doing that project and relocating someplace else. And I say that because the amount of money that's slated for that project, although not taxpayer dollars, the revolving loan fund could probably use a lot of those dollars in other places. So I will sit back and listen to your answer. Thank you.
We will not be answering that question at this time. I'll take it up with the Agenda Setting Committee, and we'll have a presentation at another time. Anyone else? Sue?
Susan Belleville, District Eight. I unfortunately am going to keep this up every opportunity I get to bring forward incidences that I have witnessed or been party to around safety and in events that occur downtown. This past Saturday morning at three thirty, I received a text message from someone who was sharing with me that there was an individual in the Harmony parking lot kicking and attempting to break into my office, DBA office, the hair salon, and the art gallery. They were unsuccessful in doing that, but they tried. Saturday afternoon, I was in the parking lot, taking a break. I'd just got off a long road trip, and I was reading a book. And it caught my eye that there were two women who were making a beeline for the dumpster out in the back where I have my, where I was parked. And they proceeded to pull out a crack pipe and like right up, right in front of me. I also saw where they got that, those drugs from. That information is being passed on to the Police Department, including photographs. This is stuff that's got to stop. This was on a Saturday afternoon at three thirty. This stuff has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. All right. See, no further hands. Anything else want to? All right, let us get right into the consent agenda. John, would you like to give us a thumbnail sketch of the consent agenda?
Sure. Three items on the consent agenda tonight. If you approve this agenda, you'll be authorizing the town to apply for two Vtrans grants, up to two hundred thousand for resurfacing a section of Heinsberg Road, and up to two hundred thousand for designing and replacing a highway structure on Chestnut Street. You will also be authorizing a twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollar server replacement from the capital fund as previously planned.
Super. Is there any discussion? Okay, why don't I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda? Peter?
A motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Great. All Select Board members care to vote on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That has passed, five zero. Moving right along to regular business. The financial quarterly update is item nine A. John, would you like to present the financial quarterly update?
Well, we won't have our finance director present it.
No, we won't.
Because we don't have one at the moment, so I'll do the best I can, and hopefully the board will bear with me and try and address this as, you know, as reasonably as I can here. So
Great.
We have for you a report in the backup materials for the Town's General Fund, as well as the two business funds, the utilities and parking fund, as well as some additional information about the balances on a number of accounts. In the general fund, expenditures are, we are seventy-five percent through the fiscal year as of the report of this, the date of this report, which is March thirty-first, through the end of the third quarter. So we're seventy-five percent of the way through, and expenditures are currently at eighty-three point seven percent of the annual budget in the general fund. When we prorate the annual expenditures, some of those are paid more upfront. We find that the general fund expenditures are currently running at seventy-nine point four percent of the annual budget, so slightly over our plan. Total revenues as of the end of the quarter were at twenty-one million, seventy-eight thousand, and total expenses were at nineteen million, three hundred thousand. In the utilities fund, expenditures are at seventy-eight point one percent of the annual budget, and prorated, those are, those expenditures are at seventy-six point seven percent of the annual budget. In the utilities fund, we have approximately three point five million in revenues through the quarter, the third quarter, and five point four million in total expenses. In the parking fund, expenditures are at seventy-nine percent of the annual budget, and when we prorate those, the parking fund is also running high over the seventy-five percent mark for through third quarter at seventy-seven point seven percent of the annual budget. Total revenues are currently at four hundred and eighty-three thousand, and total expenses are at eight hundred and two thousand. So there's also a loan report in here that shows a balance of over four million in outstanding loans issued through the various loan programs the town has. And there is a fund balance report that has updates on all of the town funds as of the close of the quarter. The grant report contains information on the thirty active grants and seven, seven grants that are in the application process currently. And I will try to answer any questions that I can, or take notes and get back to you with anything I can't.
Great. Well, let's start with the left side of the table. Peter, Isaac, you have any comments?
I have a bunch of questions, just out of curiosity and because I'm new here. But on the first page with the general fund, is this a good time to ask specific questions about line items?
You could. And what I did when I was new, although these many seven years ago, I asked them when I met with the town manager. But feel free to ask questions if you feel the need.
Okay. I think this one might be of interest to folks, is if you have any sense of why the sales tax and meals, alcohol, room sales are down. Is this, I mean, relative to where we are in the year? It looks like we've only gotten about half of the revenue that we would have anticipated for the fiscal year, but we're three quarters of the way through the fiscal year. Is this typical for us?
Yep, this is typical. In the third quarter, we've received two payments from the state on both of those, and we expect to have two additional payments by the end of the fiscal year, so.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a mud season item?
Yeah.
All right. How about this side of the table? That was it, Isaac?
I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay.
I guess my question is, does this look relatively normal?
Pardon?
Does all this reporting look relatively normal compared to other years?
I think, I think it's fair to say that we're, we're running a bit over budget on a number of items, mainly things beyond our control, or things that we could not have anticipated when this budget was put together a year and a half ago, so.
If I can jump in on that, Amanda, I think, you know, what the purpose of this quarterly report is, is to show where we are in the budget as a guide for next year's planning. But I do believe that there is a recurring problem with the parking fund that we're all aware of, and it needs, it needs tending to in terms of the fact that, and we have a procedure that we've used ARPA money for in the past and other money in the past. But I think solving that problem is something that we'll be addressing next year with the budget.
Actually, later, later this spring, you'll take up a parking budget for fiscal twenty-six. We're hoping, there's a number of parking system improvements that the staff has been working on. They want to present those to you to see if you would be interested in doing any of them. We hope to have that conversation at your first meeting in May, and then later in May or June, have a discussion about the parking budget. You may recall that the parking budget was, there was a planned deficit in that last year to keep the, the cost for parking lower this, this year and do a transition to the higher rates. So we had planned a deficit of about a hundred and eleven thousand in the, in the parking fund. I did check on our cash balance there, and it stood at four hundred and seventy-seven thousand at the start of the fiscal year. So, you know, the, the challenge that the board will have is whether you're going to want to increase fees again on parking, or whether you're going to want to continue to ride down that deficit. One issue, and this is actually the issue that Dick DeGray brought up, is we, the way the parking fund was structured, it relied heavily on income from the Transportation Center, the rentals at the Transportation Center. We have not been able to rent those out in any meaningful way, and part of the hope of the last Select Board was that improvements there with the police substation could lead to an ability to bring more revenues into the parking fund and get us back on stable footing there.
Is the weather coating and sealing project ongoing?
Yes, it is. It will be completed this spring.
Great.
I have one other follow-up question. Which department currently is in charge of the parking?
The Police Department is in charge of the parking.
Oscar, do you have comments?
Yeah, just a few. It's, this is actually a really difficult document to read or to summarize, because, like, for example, it, the revenue total is lower than it should be because, or looks lower than it should be because we haven't gotten the third quarter of rooms and meals and one local option sales tax, so that's better than it looks. There are other cases where, like, correct me if I'm wrong, we, it looks like we've corrected, we've collected all the property tax for the fiscal year. So that's an area where this is page one of seventeen, current taxes, like eighth from the top. And it's right at budget. So I'm assuming we don't have another quarter of property taxes to collect for this year. So that's an area where it's actually, revenue is worse than it looks, because you might think that you can't just take the total revenue and prorate it out another quarter. So this is a really difficult document to analyze. I do think if you look at a couple bits, police overtime, fire overtime in expenses, and if you look at the benefits total, we're at, like, benefits total is an expense that I would expect to be smooth throughout the year. So the fact that we have another quarter to go and would be on pace to spend like another one point two million, if that pace holds up, depending on how things, I think there's real possibilities of sort of substantial deficits here. And maybe we can make things up in other ways, but there, there's some stuff we can look at more closely. But, so, those are my thoughts, and we can talk about that more privately, and
I think, I think also, if we had a treasurer, you know, you'd have more than this print out.
Oh, absolutely.
And more analysis. So I think it's pretty darn, darn good for not having a treasurer and not having an assistant town manager. So, anyone else in, in the room have comments? Yes, sir?
Hi, Randy Blodge at District Seven. Just more comment, and I understand the short staff. Normally, is there forecasting done? Like, some of the things that we were just going over, whether through software or good old sharpening your pencil, as some of these things are coming up, financially, you would forecast whether this is normal, this isn't normal, have notes. And I know it's a staff problem, but is that something we normally do when they give these reports, since I haven't heard it before, where there's some forecasting given financially?
Sometimes there's heads up. For example, the recurring problem with the parking fund is identified. And, but generally speaking, this is a quarterly idea of where the budget is going. And the, the things that you're asking for, the analysis that you're asking for, is, these inform the budget process that will take place later in the year.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking for, like, you brought up, like, you know, that forecasting may help with some efficiencies, and I realize where we're at, but just to make that comment for the future, that there is software and things available that would make it easier.
Yes.
So that's all I wanted to do.
And we have this excellent software that we need to use better, and we have a plan for that. John, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, that's actually the reason, like, why we underbudgeted in, in benefits here is because we took a snapshot a year and a half ago on where everything was, before we even got, like, our healthcare rates and stuff like that. Some of our self-insurance on health has been running very high this year, for whatever reason, the staff, some staff are taking, having the need for that, unfortunately. So that was also hard to, to So that was also hard to plan for, and the software that Liz is referring to is finally going to allow us to plug in what each individual employee is anticipated to need in upcoming years. And so we're fine, we finally have someone who's getting very proficient at that, and we're encouraged that for the FY '27 projection, at least, we'll be able to do a much better job on actually knowing what the cost will be.
Okay, great. That was just a general financial question. Thank you.
Good questions. Mr. DeGray.
Okay, am I all, am I good? Okay, there we go. To Isaac's question, actually, the check for the rooms and meals tax should be in about this week. It's about a month and a half lag after the quarter ends. And then the last check for April, May, June, that comes in August, about the middle of August. As for Oscar's question, there is one more tax collection, that's in May. I wish you were right that there wasn't one more. I would have a little bit more money to spend. The question where John gave me a little bit of a shout-out is a question when you're doing budgeting, is how much rent will the enterprise fund, the parking fund, be charging the municipality for rent in the space, which would greatly help out the parking fund, and something to think about when you're doing, putting this budget forward, because you would actually have to be putting money in the budget to pay the rent to the enterprise fund if that project is going to go forward. My last comment here is when I look at the overtime line items, fires overtime line item is like at 310,000 with one more quarter left. Police is over by about 40,000 or 50,000 with a quarter left. Public Works, which had a tough winter, they're over by about 25,000 still with a quarter left. I'm very concerned that, like the year that just ended, that we're going to end in another deficit, and is there any talk with the administration to change course with departments on doing projects or holding things up? Lastly, I'm going to ask the board to do monthly financial reports. I think it serves the town better, and even if the select board members don't have questions about the budget, I believe that the public does, and it's in the best interest of the town. So if you could answer that question for me, are those questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Again, Dick, we'll take those questions under advisement and work with the agenda-setting committee to determine whether or not we'll have a quarterly or monthly budget. Yes?
Can I just ask a quick follow-up? If, and, I mean, I pay property tax, you'd think I would know when it happens, but if we do have another quarter of property taxes to collect, and I'm kind of, this would just be a question to go away and look at, I think, but I'm confused by the current taxes line item on page one where it budgets for 17 million, we've collected 17 million. If we have another quarter to go, I suspect that something may have gotten transposed there or something like that.
Maybe I'll look at it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Kate?
Hi, Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro. I know Dick just mentioned this, but I kind of can't just let it go. I really hope that you'll look at the finance reports monthly as opposed to quarterly. It used to be monthly, and then it went to quarterly, and I think it's important that we see it quarterly considering where we are. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, monthly. Please look at monthly.
Okay. I'm going to go to the Zoom and then back to you, Franz. Alyssa? We can't hear you, Alyssa? Seth, can you, oh, there you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I can't hear anything.
We can hear you.
So I just have a quick question. Oh, darn it. Hello, can you hear me now? I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, I do apologize for that. I'm sorry. Just a real quick question. So this fancy software that you speak of, are all departments utilizing this software? I mean, we paid a great deal of money, and I would hope that everybody's on board with this. Is that what we're expecting, and is that in fact happening?
A good question, and John, you can answer that.
Yeah, all departments use it, everyone does. It's the platform for our financial system.
Okay. I was just wondering because.
Our financial system.
Okay, great. I just had a quick question. I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
All right. Franz?
Franz Reichsman, Brattleboro. I just want to say that in my recollection, being over budget this way is an unusual circumstance for us to find ourselves in at this stage of the year. And it looks like it's adding up to be a substantial amount of money, and there is a real risk of a deficit at the end of the year. I would kind of think that you would be looking at ways to fix that situation. I don't know that there are opportunities for increased revenue, so then we'd be talking about spending less. Anyway, I just want to say that this does appear to be, to be an unusual set of numbers for us to be looking at. In my experience, thinking back over the years, it was more likely we'd be at 72%, 73% in most areas. So it, you know, it causes some alarm for me to be seeing this. And certainly for the rest of this year, I mean, you can talk about quarterly, monthly financial reports, but I think for the rest of this fiscal year, it might be a good idea to have monthly reports because paying attention to this is going to be very important. Thank you.
Great. All right. And, you know, of course, the fire department overtime is a factor, and the numerous fires that we've had in the past month is a factor. And so we'll be looking at all of that, not only as we move to the end of the year, but in our budget planning for next year and as we welcome onboard our new fire chief. Okay, shall we move on?
I have one more question.
Yes.
So just for clarification, because I think the public might want to learn more. So our software licenses, this is following up on Alyssa's question. So software licenses are paid for through many departments, and they are an expensive item, and I wonder if we could just all learn just a little bit more together about why multiple departments have software licensing fees that they have to pay for. Do you want to answer that?
Well, I mean, just quickly, we have many systems that different departments use different software systems, so those are, you know, some of them are legacy that we still have to pay for because we can't, we don't have data. Like, in the assessor's office, we need data that's in legacy systems to be able to do the business of the assessor's office, and so they probably have a software component there. And then, you know, there are different needs across the whole enterprise that require technology, and so that's what those costs are for.
Yeah, I mean, I became aware that the assessor's office in particular needs to be in line with state guidelines for software licensing, so that does have to be specific, and it's an older one, whereas the other ones are, have the opportunity to be with the newer financial platform. So I just feel like for transparency, that might, because those are big-ticket items that people might want to just understand.
And then, but the planning department has planning software, and each department has its own. But then overall, open gov is also shared among each department, so. David, did you have a comment?
David Lovemark, District 9. You may be moderating your voices for BCTV, but for those of us here, it's getting to be a bit of a struggle to hear you.
All right. So moving forward, I'm going to teach everybody how to project.
Okay. Let's everybody take a deep breath, and are we ready to move on? Let me welcome Chief Jay Simons and Assistant Chief Charles Keer to the table. This item is called Fire Department Overview?
Quarterly Report.
Quarterly Report.
Hello, everyone. Jay Simons, new fire chief. Just.
Point of order. Did we need to take a vote on the findings?
Oh, do we do that?
We didn't.
Do we do that?
Yeah.
All right. Hold your horses there over there.
Thanks for the interruption. I was about to roll into it.
I can feel it.
I was ready.
Perhaps, Peter, you would like to make a motion?
I think I've done enough.
To accept the quarterly.
Yes. I'll make the motion to accept the quarterly financial report as presented.
Great. All select board members in favor of approving this financial report as presented, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Past 5-0. Thank you, Peter. Now, next.
You owe me.
I do. I got you.
Take it away, Fire Department.
Okay. Jay Simons, new fire chief. With the board's permission, we have our quarterly report, but I also have a little intro from me. And then I went, because I've been watching select board meetings since October, I know everyone is very interested in the cost analysis of providing EMS services from the fire department. I have put together an analysis for you, so after the quarterly report, I'll throw that out real quick for public consumption. If you want it in writing, I can provide it in writing, but right now I just have the numbers that I can put out there. I do like to just stand up and give speeches, but to keep myself on the point, I actually wrote it down. So here we go. I'm excited to be part of the departments that care for Brattleboro. I have never been involved in a town where all the department heads meet every single week to discuss, how do we improve the town? How do we solve our problems? I have an overtime problem. What do you do to solve that problem? So we're sharing those ideas. This is hugely important. I've never seen that before. We are your fire department, and we work to serve this community. Community safety, which has been a very hot topic, involves all the departments within the town and all of the community members. It's no one person's responsibility. Your fire department is part of the team that is working to improve Brattleboro. We are out there alongside of the police, working with the people to find solutions that are not just going to the hospital or going to jail, but other agencies that can help them through their times of crisis. We go to people's homes with their case managers and help find solutions. These are not 911 calls. These are us taking initiative to get out there and help these people and offer them some different solutions. We're starting a car seat program so that new parents can come to the firehouse, new and old parents can come to the firehouse and have their car seats installed by a professional and feel secure that they're transporting their most precious item, their most precious children, in their vehicle safely. We are in the community, providing community education, which includes fire prevention, health and safety education, CPR, first aid, all those education programs. In my first seven days as fire chief, we had three structured fires, and I witnessed some of the most professional firefighters working tirelessly to ensure fires are brought under control, preventing damage to exposure properties, and ensuring people evaluated and treated. All the people involved were evaluated and treated appropriately. Firefighters left their homes after working a 24-hour shift, came back to the firehouse, and worked another 12 hours to put out fires, to clean fire hose, to put the trucks back in service, and answer additional calls that were coming in on top of those structured fires. All the firefighters demonstrated genuine concern for the community and their safety. It is vital that we continue to care for our town employees. Every person lost is a loss of knowledge and a loss of opportunity cost. Opportunity costs are those costs in time, our most valuable resource, which you cannot buy, you cannot get more of, to train new people. So every time we lose somebody, instead of honing our skills, instead of going out and teaching a CPR program, we have to, you know, put all our efforts into training this new employee. So every employee has both a cost value and, like, actual financial cost and opportunity cost because they have to be trained and brought to speed, just like the assistant chief is spending a lot of time training me. I've watched, like I said, I've watched several select board meetings since October. I've watched every single one. I watched the RTM even before I was hired, before I applied to the position. I wanted to know what Brattleboro was all about, and I learned that through the select board meetings and the RTM meetings. Hours, hours. I've heard the terms budget crisis and dying town. If we do not invest into this community, then it will be a dying town. Just much like a normal business, it takes investment in order to improve the circumstances in which we live, and we have to improve those circumstances to bring in more revenue to offset property taxes. But that doesn't happen on its own. That happens through investment. I'm proud to be the fire chief of the Brattleboro Fire Department. I am proud of the firefighters and the work they do. I have truly been impressed by what I've seen in this last seven days. You truly have town departments that are led by professionals and some of the best I've seen in the multiple communities that I've been in. I will now turn it over to Assistant Chief Keer for the quarterly report.
Thank you. That was a powerful statement. Thank you.
So thank you for the opportunity for the quarterly report, as usual. One of the things that I noted in previous reports is that we had a heavy focus on data and statistics, and while that is very important for the things that we talk about, I also received a couple of different heartfelt emails that really brought me back to the impact that these guys are doing every single day, really means a great deal to our community, and some of those are reflected here, just showing the community's appreciation for the firefighters' work. Moving down a little bit further, we had a number of different fire suppression events. This was dated as of April 7th, not to include the most recent fires. Most notably so, out of the building, as the calls noted, there was a technical rescue on March 8th, and I'd like to personally shout out firefighter Hool and firefighter Wyman, who did a remarkable job on a technical rescue, along with our partnering agencies, Rescue Incorporated and Marble Fire Department. And then on March 26th, you guys graciously presented me last week, and I appreciate that, but I think what also has to be noted at the SIT campus building fires was Captain Emery's notable leadership to extinguish those fires and command that as well. Some more staffing update with the hire of Chief Simons in almost four years. That indicates a, the first time we've been full-staffed in a very, very long time. So we're really proud of that. I think that's going to sit to testament of a lot of things that our folks are doing for recruitment and retention. We're proud of that. Now, we did know on, that we had some probable vacancies coming. One of those is Superintendent Newton has announced his retirement after over 20 years of service with our community. So he'll be retiring on May 5th, and we'll work on recruiting a new superintendent soon. The Situation Table, we had an update on that as a community a few weeks ago. We, again, make continuous great strides in that area. Most recently, Superintendent Fritz has attained several case management, attended several case management meetings with active community members that overutilize or inappropriately call 911, so we're creating an avenue for those people to get resources that they need outside of emergency services, which is helping all units, both police, fire, deal with those. But we've also created and implemented electronic identification form that allows for EMS providers to identify those individuals with acute elevated risk and getting those services to them through that Situation Table and in more timely fashion. So those are some of the things that we're pretty proud of there.
Chuck, let me stop you for a sec.
Sure.
I certainly understand what you mean by Situation Table, but I'm not sure that the public understands that the Situation Table is an outgrowth of the one Brattleboro committee. committee that John Potter convened with state help in terms of agency help and all the social service agencies grouped together to work with the police and Fire Department to find solutions for people with complex needs. And so the situation table is a subset of one Brattleboro wherein first providers, Police Department and Fire Department are, make the social service agencies aware of these repeated calls of people with complex needs, and then together, the social service agencies and the first responders come up with solutions to help that individual person. And by coming up with a plan to help that individual person, the overall calls for emergency services are reduced.
Yeah, and, and looking at how we've done things previously for the past 24 years, I can say nothing bad about the situational table in, in one Brattleboro. There are some remarkable, remarkable things happening in our community that, that are around that situational table and the connections that are being built between the different agencies that we have in our community and our, our own town staff. It's pretty amazing.
Yes, I agree. Please continue.
EMS oral review, that's largely in part what a lot of people like to listen to. We've made significant progress in our EMS billing, provider certification, and patient care initiatives. We've Medicare reimbursement now established. We've seen steady improvements in revenue collection efficiency and processing claims and ongoing achievements in EMS education and service delivery. Now, as we move down a little bit further in the report, more into the data collection, this is the same format that Superintendent Fritz previously provided in our EMS update, and at your recommendation, we've continued in that same format. So this is reflective as of July 1, 2024, to March 31st, 2025. Total payments received is $484,802. Now, I would say, while I bring this down through, since that time and as of April 10th, we've received an additional $44,562. I just wanted to note that. Hundred and, 1,742 EMS trips billed, gross charges of $2,531,991, contractual allowances, 929, 916.04. Some people had some questions about contractual allowances after publishing this report. That is essentially the difference. We know that 67% of our payer mix is federal pay, and that is the difference. So the, that, while we may bill $1,400 per call, we know that the federal government and state government have their own billing policies, and that's essentially what that layman's term means, is what we can expect to lose. Net charges of $1,602.74. My apologies for adding a decimal point instead of a comma in that one. Medicare charges, $950,835. Medicaid charges, $772,301. I'll put a pause there. I realized after printing this report that this line also may be a little bit confusing, whereas I put Vermont Medicaid underneath that. To make, to clarify that, of the 772,000, 760 of that comes directly from Vermont Medicare. The other remaining is New Hampshire Medicare or Massachusetts or New York. Private insurance represents $654,794. Self-pay charges is 154,04059. And I'm going to talk about that number a little bit more later on. But another thing that I noted or was questioned after putting out some of this data was, geez, there seems to be still missing about $4,000 or $4,500 when we do some of the math here. There's not a real good way to account for that money. What specifically happened is we had to perform three interfacility transports. That's not a bucket that we typically drop money in, and it's only three calls, but each one of those calls generated about $1,500 or $1,494 in reimbursements. So that's that little bit of difference that you're seeing from those numbers not adding up.
Chuck, what is an interfacility transport?
Interfacility transport is, for example, if the Brattleboro retreat has a patient that needs to leave that medical facility and then be transported to another medical facility, such as BMH or Cheshire County, then, or the reverse, then we would handle that. That's not typically a service that we do. Typically, that's done through various agencies in our area, Rescue Incorporated, Golden Cross. Now, if, what is important is that we do identify that there's a holistic approach to med, the medical system, and that if there's a patient sitting in a hospital bed at Brattleboro Memorial Hospital that needs to be transferred out, that is preventing another patient to being admitted into that facility, then we try to help that. That's not something that we commonly do. That's not something that we're situated to do, and we count on those other agencies to handle those, but in the time of need, we'll be there.
And is, do you bill for that?
We do bill for that. That's part of that, those billing rates that you guys set about a year ago.
Great.
All right. Some other updates. Insurance reimbursement, we have made progress with Vermont Blue Cross Blue Shield Advantage and United Healthcare. They have both accepted our credentials and processing claims for, with reimbursements expected to vary in the near future with an outstanding balance of $266,000. We only estimate that we'll receive about $91,000 from that, or about 34%. Our payer comparison, as you move down through, you know, where we receive reimbursements from and the percentages that we receive, this has come up a couple of different times, but as you can see, it weighs heavily on Medicare and Medicaid. Talking about projected goals, things that we've discussed previously in previous meetings. So our FY25 projected EMS reimbursement is $837,127. We had that startup funding dropped in there, $250,000. That was added in as we started this endeavor. And that, so that really creates a remaining budget amount of $587,127 as a goal to meet for FY25. Total received as of the end of March is $484,802, as discussed earlier. And so the remaining amount needed in the next three months is $102,324. Now, I would say you can minus $44,562 from that, because that's information that is not in your report, but that's relative in the last 10 days. As we move forward and keep more key developments and next steps with EMS billing and EMS, we transition to EFT payments, which ensures reducing mail delays and increases efficiency. We continue to work with over 49 payers to get set up on electronic payments. Secondary co-insurance payments have started coming in, with recent payment from AARP supplements from Medicare. Outstanding insurance payments, excluding self-pay, $377,000. We, we projected a reimbursement rate of 34% on that. That would reimburse $128,484. Now, what I would say along this, specifically this bullet point, is none of our projections really include self-pay. That's a number that we just didn't include and don't include, but we do know that there is a line there. The remaining gap meets budget projections, $102,324. With the current outstanding payments, the reimbursement exceeds the budgetary amount by $26,159. Remain confident that we will close this gap in the coming months. The pre-vent, pre-hospital Vermont Buick and Orphan Treatment Program, we're set to roll that out as of July 1. We're currently working with state agencies and other agencies that have been a part of this program to roll it out and execute it the most efficient manner possible. Currently, we're working on finalizing training and with our providers to get that ready to go for July 1, and we look forward to that initiative. Looking ahead, other things, continuing to improve our billing efficiency and insurance reimbursements, expanding training opportunities for ambulance providers, and strengthening that pre-vent program that I just talked about. Now, on this next point of interest, so on the side-by-side EMS response data, Dr. Reichman brought this up at a few different meetings, and it's always kind of been a, a little bit of a confusing mark. And I wanted to take a moment to explain how we've gotten to this side-by-side data comparison. So if you remember back to March 2022, and we, we began this initiative to move forward with EMS, we had a lot of different concerns about how many times our ambulances were going to be going out the door, how many times our staff was going to be going out the door. So we began to look at what all of that information meant. And as we collected that data, working with our partners at Golden Cross, we created this table. And while it is really, really important, it's no longer directly accurate, I believe, to what you guys are looking for. And I would encourage you guys to think about either removing this data table or changing it. For example, if we look at the blue section, we have a total of 200, 2,912 times that we're...
Chuck, ours is black and white.
Aw, man!
The one on the right, the one on the rightier page, FY25 quarter 1 through quarter 3. So this number is reflective of every time that an ambulance responds with a firetruck or independently as an ambulance. And that is something that you guys really want to know and was important to our community three years ago. While I still think it's important, I don't know if it's necessarily data that you need given to you in each report, because what we've, what I've found is what you're really looking for is the data that represents every time we respond to a patient and provide a patient contact. That's more of what you're looking for. And back to Dr. Reichman's statement last time, we're an all-hazardous department. So our staff is utilized both for EMS calls and for fire calls alike. I'll give the example of the SIT fire. While we were at the SIT fire, I need to, we were doing suppression efforts, and as we quickly moved into a longer-duration incident, the same provider that was providing, that was on the end of a hand line doing suppression efforts, moved to the ambulance and was providing rehab services for our, our staff. So yes, there was an ambulance there at that SIT emergency. Did we transport anybody, and was that the nature of the call? Absolutely not. Is that reflective in this data? Yes. In the lower data, it is not. And so what I would encourage you guys to ask is that I provide you that yearly data, data mark, because we're coming up at the end of a quarter or the end of a year, and I provide you those yearly numbers consistent to how we've been doing, and then you make your decision whether or not that's something you want us to do. So the, reflective to the patient encounters, we responded to 802 EMS calls, evaluated 744 patients. 90 patients declined treatment and/or transport. The most common conditions encountered, 72 injuries, 62 cases of psychiatric or behavioral problems, 68 calls for pain, 54 cases of general illness. And I'll, I'll let you guys read down through, or the community can read down through. Moving on into fire prevention, while I typically would breeze over this, select, select board member Thurber mentioned record management systems, and this is a good example of how record management systems are fully integrated within our department to not only our fire prevention division, but they handle our scheduling software when people are on duty. They are, they meet all of the, the federal and state requirements for incident reportings, and that's just an example of one record management system that we utilize that really is intertwined deeply into everything that we do. In this particular case, we're talking about the certificate of habilities. Every rental housing unit in town receives a certificate of habability. We've now integrated that into a more streamlined system where when a property owner is looking to know when they receive that certificate of habability, they can do so very easily, and it also allows us to keep track of that more accurately. I'd like to give a shout out to Inspector Nelson here. He played a crucial role in the SIT incident on March 26th in getting those buildings and those dormitory buildings back up, working with the Division of Fire Safety to make sure that people could get back into their safe living places as quickly as possible. And lastly, probably the things that I'm most proud of and other accomplishments, we just recently had firefighter EMT Finn McMillan obtain his paramedic certification. We're really proud of Finn and did an excellent job through that process, smiling the entire time. So we're really happy for him. Firefighter Legensberger and firefighter Von der Horst just completed their hazardous materials technician program. Firefighter Legensberger has obtained his certification, while firefighter Von der Horst is still working on doing so. Superintendent Fritz also presented at two regional conferences, including a pediatric ready management, managing the critically ill child, and a worst-possible design to help EMS clinicians in the early recognition of management and pediatric emergencies. I discussed Superintendent Newman already. One provider, additionally, one provider has enrolled in the EMT program in January and is expected to complete that training in May, and two other providers completed their advanced EMT program and are scheduled to test. That includes my quarterly report, and I would definitely entertain any questions. I got one more piece before we go to questions. So it's, I, I feel it's really important to put it out there that the paramedic program, anybody that goes through a paramedic program dedicates about anywhere from 4,000 to 8,000 hours of training to receive that license, and that's with clinical time and with the actual classroom time. And what that allows a provider to do is basically everything that can be done in an emergency room, say for a cardiac arrest, is done by that provider in the back of an ambulance. So that is a huge, I am also a paramedic. That is a huge undertaking, a huge amount of dedication, and, and you can't just get through it. Like, you really got to be dedicated to it. So as promised, I'm going to give you the EMS numbers, so you can chew on those a little bit. I'm going to preface this with, I will always shoot you straight. So when I tell you that our firefighters are professional, if they weren't, I would sit here and say they are terrible, but I'm going to fix it, but that is not what I'm telling you. Our EMS providers, who are also our firefighters, are in that same boat. I have been a supervisor in agencies where when the call comes in, the providers are like, oh, I gotta go on another EMS call. That does not happen in Brattleboro. These folks have come to me with ideas about how to improve EMS, how to do more EMS, how to be more in view, involved in the community, setting up programs like community paramedicine. Like, these are big deals. So you have, you truly have a professional staff. I'm not trying to just keep saying that, but I, I want you to own it like you really, really do. All right. So cost EMS. To be perfectly clear, the cost that I'm going to give you is the difference between Brattleboro Fire Department being a rescue service and Brattleboro Fire Department being a transporting agency. That is the cost I'm giving you. The cost analysis that Bob sent out is a different analysis. That is an analysis done by Medicaid, Medicare, and that does a percentage of calls. And what that means is, if we do 75% EMS calls, basically you take our budget, you make, you take 75% of that budget, and that would be their cost of doing EMS. That is not a realistic cost of doing EMS, because if you take those ambulances out of the firehouse, we still have to provide this service, and it still costs, you know, we still have the building, we still have the firetrucks, we still have the staff. So I just want to, I want to be clear, this is the difference between a rescue service and a transporting ambulance service. The costs that are included in that are conferences and memberships, equipment maintenance, fuel, medical supplies, medical oversight, vehicle maintenance specific to the ambulances, operating supplies, state provider assessment, EMS billing, staffing, ambulance replacement, EMS cost, which is a, I'm sorry, that's the total. So the total EMS cost is $942,098. That is the total cost of providing EMS service. That is the total cost of providing EMS service. Included in that is seven staff members. And, and where we came up with seven staff members is, um, you know, looking back to like twenty twenty-two, as we started to add staff, we kind of added seven total positions. Again, a, a point of clarification, if you pulled those ambulances out today, you would not want to take away seven staffing positions. That would be de- detriment to the fire department and the services we provide. But I did include it in that cost to be as realistic as possible. Our projected EMS reimbursement for billing, the worst case scenario is eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar, eight hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That leaves us a deficit of one hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars from the caught. I'm sorry?
Repeat that last number?
The, the total deficit?
Yeah.
Total deficit is one hundred and four nine seventy-one. We anticipate that to be a smaller number, but that was, you know, EMS reimbursed, projected EMS reimbursement, that would be the minimum that we would bring in. As I understand it, uh, there was, there were several, uh, proposals for contracted ambulance service. The lowest of those that came in was two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars per year. So, we are saving Brattleboro one hundred and fifty-three thousand twenty-nine dollars by providing EMS services through the fire department, transporting EMS services through the fire department. Um, I would be happy to, to provide those numbers in an email to the select board or however you would like it. Again, I apologize for not having this done before, but this was, this is a topic that keeps coming up. And I just, I really wanted to answer the question, uh, so that we can keep moving forward.
Well, thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome, and we are certainly open to any questions.
Great, um, who would like to kick it off on the select board?
Oh, yeah, I do see that on the, the, um, the general fund, that, the, the line that you just told us, it's right there. So, it is in the backup materials, which.
Yes.
Real-time confirmation.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm just, I would, I'd love to learn, learn a little more. So, sixty-eight calls for pain, but does that, that doesn't include heart, chest pain?
So, our, our calls are broken down into a very large matrix of calls, um, and that we're dispatched out to. So, what we've asked Superintendent Fritz is to categorize those calls in a more digestible fashion for you folks. So, what, uh, the number that you're looking at is.
It was just most common medical conditions encountered included.
Sixty-eight calls for pain. That could mean, um, somebody has fallen and broken their arm or it could mean that they've stubbed their toe, or they could be having some sort of cardiac issue that's not directly, uh, that didn't get dispatched out as a cardiac emergency.
Got it, okay. Um, and also, in terms of the prevent program, um, so, it's an initiative, and how is it funded and how long is it? How long is the commitment to fund the buprenorphine program?
Um, so, the buprenorphine program is a statewide initiative, um, and there's a certain set of protocols that fall along with that initiative. We are given the opportunity to adapt those protocols within our, um, structure. So, the Brattleboro Fire Department is given that based on, based on data and statistics derived from one Brattleboro, from a number of different places. But our community is, has a need for the prevent program. And because of that need, because of our availability to do so with advanced EMTs and paramedics, we've been given the green light to be a part of that program or asked to be a part of it. It does have a minimal cost, that cost is minimal. The buprenorphine has a very low, um, cost to it. And, um, we see that as a, uh, an opportunity to really help somebody and lower the cost for multiple responses and or to those agencies that are, are really able to get to them. And more importantly, and more importantly, um, this is a really great initiative to start helping people with, um, drug addiction, opiate addiction, um, and really begin to have them get into that recovery effort sooner.
And a, a further question?
I just want to finish answering that, so the only associated cost for that is the cost of the medication. There's no additional, like, medical oversight or anything like that needed, it's just the medication cost, which is minimal.
And will that be eligible if it continues and it's a successful program for the opiate settlement funds to be used for potentially?
That's a great.
Let me jump in and say, yes, but we should really look for bigger fish than something which is of nominal cost.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think I can get you the, what the projected costs of that buprenorphine program are. There, it's very minimal, it's less than, it's less than a thousand dollars, um, would be my guess. But I can get you that exact cost for the next time.
That's okay, I was just wondering for the prolonged, if it's a success and its longevity and continue, continuation of care.
Sure.
Yes.
Hi, um, thank you both for being here. I hope it goes without saying, I think we all know you guys do really dangerous, important work, and we're really appreciative. I'm gonna just, I have one question about the revenue side. Because this stuff is, this is another thing that's kind of tricky to work with and look at, so I'm breaking my cellphone rule just to look at a calculator. But I'm trying to, um, just understand a few things myself. So, I think the simplest way for me to look at this is, right now, we've gone through three quarters, right? Basically, complete. We have, for those three quarters, we have one point six million in billings that, so, we subtract out the contractual allowances and we're left with one point six million in billings. So, if we divide one point six oh two by three, we get five hundred and thirty-four thousand. I'm not necessarily expecting an answer right off the bat on this. We get five hundred and thirty-four thousand a quarter for the last three quarters in billings. If we multiply those billings by the thirty-four percent reimbursement rate, we're looking at about, we're projecting a hundred and eighty-two K per quarter for the last three quarters. So, that, that doesn't necessarily have to be an accurate pace, but it's sort of the best back of the napkin, back of the napkin that I have right now. So, if we took a hundred and eighty-two K and multiplied it by four quarters for next year, that comes out to seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, and we're budgeting for EMS reimbursement at eight eighty-one. So, I guess, I, and this might be something, a question we take away and think about more, but getting from here to there, are we expecting a change in the reimbursement rate? Are we expecting that in the second year we will, our billings will just increase because it's the second year or something like that? Um, so, I guess, those are my thoughts, and I'm generally curious, a little more information about how we get to the budgeted revenue number for next year.
So, a cou- couple of things on that, um, you know, this is a, this is, insurance is hard, right? We, we've said that time and time again. Uh, those, those numbers are an average number, so the thirty-four percent, uh, recovery is like an average number. Um, we're already projecting to, we will have met that, that budget eight hundred thousand. So, the, the, the math doesn't work out perfectly, to divide that one point six million by the three quarters and then take out thirty-four percent. Because some, like, private insurance will pay more than that. Uh, and then Medicaid, Medicare is where we lose out on. And we're also, uh, anticipating increased call volume. So, that's more revenue, uh, recovery or reimbursement. So, that's how we get to those numbers. And we, we anticipate going over those numbers, but we don't want to, we don't want to provide a false high number and then not meet that. Uh, the way, the trend that we're seeing is a consistent increase month to month.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that's definitely helpful, maybe, maybe this is John, a question for you. But if I could see maybe a little more math about how we got to those projections, like, what billings we're projecting or what call volume we're projecting, that would help me, um.
I, 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 I think a review of the, uh, the numerous work that the town staff did in the decision-making about fire EMS rescue, uh, emergency ambulance would be helpful because, gosh, we went over, you know, six ways of Sunday.
Sure.
Getting up to speed in that, I think, might help, uh, understand, you know, the charts about insurance reimbursement and so forth, so that your straight-line projection isn't as accurate, obviously. I mean, you know that, as, as a more nuanced position about various insurance companies paying more, paying less, blah, blah, blah.
I think that's a fair point, but we do use the thirty-four percent number pretty liberally and generally in our projections. So, um, and of course, the, the, well, so.
Well, then, let me, let me ask Chuck to answer your question.
So, yes, we, we use it pretty liberally, right? Um, and it's our projected revenue. What I think is really important is to understand is we're nine months into this.
Right.
And for the first time in forever, this data that we're collecting for reimbursement collection belongs to the town of Brattleboro. And we have total access to these numbers. Previous to that, it was Golden Cross, and we didn't have, while they were our good partners and they, at, we were able to ask for a lot of things. That wasn't something that we did in terms of that. We knew going into this, um, project that we would have a good idea, a projected number that we suspected would be pretty accurate. But it was exactly that, the data wasn't ours and we didn't have all of the numbers. Now, we do, and we're dialing in on that, um, projections from reimbursement rates to all of the above. And when we look at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be able to have those numbers that, and we'll be able to dive into anything that, those questions like you're asking, much more detailed than what I'm giving you today.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
Also, uh, that thirty-four percent, having watched all the select, previous select board meetings, uh, people really wanted to simplify the understanding of insurance. So, in order to do that, rather than, you know, it's in the report, the breakdown of each percentage, but we, we put a round number on there just so we could say, kind of the black and white, so everybody understands, here's a number you can use to project that revenue. We can certainly, uh, invite you to the firehouse or come, come to a meeting and really deep dive into insurance. But it's, it's complicated, and we're just trying to simplify the process.
Definitely, I just, um, and, you know, this is a big new program that I want to be a success, and I think it will be a success. But I know that it's, it's on people's minds because it's a complicated thing to understand. So, maybe, I guess, I will just say, maybe I'll follow up privately with one of you guys or John after this and take it from there.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I can just, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, to, Oscar goes back to the thirty-four percent. And I think as, as we were making that decision to move to this, that was, again, as, as chief and assistant chief has said, was just sort of that number that we set at a benchmark, like, we didn't want to fall below that, certainly. Um, but, uh, it sounds like we're exceeding that. So, you know, when we hit the next cycle, maybe that number goes up and we use a different benchmark. I mean, you should know, you know, right? I mean, you're, it's all about percentages and actual collections and all that, that's, that's what comes out in the wash. And I'm getting the sense that we're exceeding those numbers now, so, thank you.
And, and we're doing better, there's education there. So, if a, if a provider doesn't, uh, perfectly fill out the pre-hospital care report or provide a face sheet, uh, we may not be able to bill for that call. So, there was provider education that had to happen too. So, we're now, we're now able to bill more than we were when the program initially started. So, that's why you also see the numbers changing.
Okay.
There, there's an educational component.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Ask one more question, or did you have one, Isaac?
I do, but go ahead.
Go ahead and, and then.
Um, so, you mentioned Blue Cross Blue Shields on board now too, are you waiting for any other insurance companies to hop on board?
I don't think so.
I mean, we do have, you know, Ohio State Insurance Company and, and little ones like that that are, we're working on getting those, uh, more private insurances on board. Um, but we've pretty much got all of the, the bigger ones that are going to be, um, are, fall within our collections.
Do you mind listing them, who they are?
Um, there's a lot of them.
Like MVP, Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Hundreds and hundreds of insurance companies that we deal with. And Blue Cross Blue Shield, obviously the bigger one. Uh, making sure that one's set up and functioning as it should has been Superintendent Fritz's priority. Um, and all of those larger percentage drops are in there. Um, those smaller ones, we'll get there. And they are, they're, they're on the radar, um, but not as much of a priority as those larger insurance carriers.
Thank you. Okay, Isaac?
Well, first of all, congratulations on being fully staffed, that's fantastic. Um, and I really appreciate seeing this data, including in the table here that has the, um, from year to year. Um, and one of the things that catches my attention is that the, that you've included the average time to scene, which is like an important quality of service indicator. And, um, it looks like from last year to this year, there was, you shaved off half a minute in terms of getting to the scene, even though you had, uh, significantly higher call vol, um, call volume. Um, and I, when I heard you say that you were thinking about, I think I heard you say that you're thinking about getting rid of this table or no longer presenting this, and was curious if you would consider continuing to present that, um, time to scene data.
Yeah, let me be clear, we'll, we'll give you any data that you want, and, and response time is one of those ones that we're very proud of. We have a policy in place that, um, takes our response time for both EMS calls and fire calls. And our response time is underneath that. More importantly, our turnout time, which means, um, from when the bell goes off to when those providers get on an apparatus, is the time that we're most proud of, and that is reflected in that overall response time. Because that is one of the biggest areas of improvement probably in the last six months is that timeframe of getting the call, getting on the vehicle, and then responding to that emergency, but that timeframe there. So, we will absolutely provide you guys with any data that you.
Let me, let me interject, though, I think that the reason that this chart was provided and, and Dr. Reichman was a big part of it, was that we were wrestling with the idea of how many ambulances we needed. And so, that's why the data was how many times we needed two ambulances and how many times we needed three ambulances. And those decisions have been made, so that's why we might want to shave some of this data off of the chart while keeping the response times up because they're so important.
That makes sense, thank you.
Uh, you have more comments?
Thank you.
Peter?
I would like this printed larger, as I forgot my readers.
What's that on your head?
These, these are, these are for seeing these guys clearly, I need a different set for here, so, that's my only comment, but thank you, this is really good, good stuff.
All right.
I did have one question.
Yes.
Where it says ninetieth per, it says ninetieth percentile time to the scene. Is that a, like a standard benchmark, uh, nationally, or is that for your department, or what does that mean?
That is a standard benchmark from the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA, um, in response time. What that ninetieth percentile does is it takes out those outliers from, you know, us responding to the farthest end of town to us responding to, um, the building next door to the fire station. So, those outliers that are really next door and those outliers are really far away, it gives a more accurate reading to, um, what is, those calls are actually happening.
Like figure skating judges, right?
Well, I'm not familiar with that, I am familiar with the NFPA.
You throw out the high one and the low one.
There you go, yeah.
Just, just to clarify, is this number that you have these times for the department or for the national, that's the national number?
So, those departments listed are the department numbers.
Okay, thank you.
The national ones are higher, we're under national standard.
And the, the first, the first column here, it says twenty twenty-four, but is it actually twenty twenty-three?
No, that, uh, that is, so, we count it as fiscal year, so that would have been last year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, the far left column of all four quarters.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are we ready for public comment?
Yeah.
Yes, Heidi?
Heidi Fisher, District 7. I just have a couple of quick numbers questions. On the part of the chart, or the top of the page, I think it is, where it says EMS billing and financial update, and it shows gross charges, then contractual allowances, then the net charges, are the ones below that, the Medicare charges, Medicaid charges, Vermont Medicaid, private insurance, and self-pay, are those really part of that 1.6 million? Like, are those, not following where those numbers are coming from compared to the net charges number?
Yep. So if you total up the Medicare charges, the Medicaid charges, the private insurance, the self-pay, that equals the gross charges.
Oh, the gross, okay.
And then you subtract out the contractual allowances, that brings you the 1.6.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And in your, I have to say, I know I'm supposed to speak to Liz, but I really appreciate, I have been one of the people who, for months and months and months, has been saying, where are the expenses, the revenue doesn't tell us enough, we need to know what the expenses are, to know whether we're, it's working, and, so I really appreciate, after months and months of asking for these numbers, that in one week, the new chief has come up with those, some of, some of those numbers. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That said, I just wondered, is your 942098, what timeframe is that referring to? Is that for this, the three quarters of the year? You didn't say whether, what that referred to.
So, that number is an annual cost. So it's not, it's based on what we've done so far, but as an annual cost.
Okay. All right. Okay. And I know you said you were gonna send your numbers to the select board, is there any way they can be, oh, will they be in the minutes so that we can have them, because you, you went down that list so fast, I couldn't write that.
I know.
Heidi, we'll figure out how to get it to the public.
Okay, great, thank you. Who's next?
Yes.
Hi, Randy Blodgett, District 7. Thanks for your service, guys, we really do appreciate what you do. I had some questions that I think maybe you are even better than we think they are. So, going back to forecasting, which I brought up.
Randy, you're gonna ask me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm gonna ask them to answer.
I'm not doing it on purpose, it's just a general, but yes, I'm sorry.
This is, you know, new to all of us.
I apologize.
That's fine.
So forecasting costs, based on the revenue margin per normal call, we're saying is billed at $1,400. I'm sure if you took all the calls, depending on what meds were on board, what supplies were used, it's higher, so it would be helpful, over a period of time, to know what our actual margin per call is, so that, we're saying, we're billing 1,400, we're getting 34%, on average is what I'm judging, and then, are we billing people over and beyond that? Like, I get for Blue Cross Blue Shield, that, you know, I pay a co-pay, they say we're gonna pay this, and then you still owe the doctors, so that's a question that I'm curious where that falls in, because it may be a larger number than we're thinking, based on that wasn't brought up, or at least, I couldn't understand it the way it was brought up. And then, I hope we're gonna do some trending in paid trip volume, determine what our actual revenue costs are, based on paid and non-paid trips, because I know there was, people refuse service, so I assume we can't bill them, so during the year, per month, per quarter, that we see where, where we're actually at, so if we need to make changes midstream, we can, and it's, you know, not going down too far before we take action, and that's just some suggestions I hope we can put in the mix as we learn more.
So Randy, you know, this is of such extreme interest, but here we are, and let's wait till the year ends, and in July, you know, the numbers will be gathered, however soon after the year ends, and we can do some analysis, and your comments are very helpful, because, you know, they're good comments, and they're of interest to everyone, but they're also good analytical benchmarks, so let's, let, let's wait till July, and see where we are, and have a fuller discussion about where we are, and what the metrics are.
Okay, yeah, they were just helps in.
Yeah.
In, during, and obviously, like you said, after. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Okay. Seth?
Correct me?
Dick's iPad.
Yes, I want to thank the chief for those numbers. Given to what we were talking about a few minutes ago with the budget, and the extreme overtime, I don't know how you take that into consideration. Now, certainly, before you got here, we had two huge fires in late October or November, and when we had our first fire update, those, those overtime hours weren't reflected, and that overtime line item was extremely high, and given the fires that you've had in the last three weeks, those aren't reflected in the numbers that we received. So I'm really concerned about EMS, and how it affects the overtime line item. I certainly, like Oscar, am concerned, given the fact that you have $250,000 that the board, and no one's objecting to that, but then getting back to, okay, there's 800, I think, 87,000, give or take a couple dollars, whatever that is, for revenue next year, that certainly concerns me about hitting that, and the, there was one other item that I can't think of off the top of my head, but that's a huge concern of mine, is this overtime line item, which is definitely gonna have a, an impact on us, I believe, having a deficit, given this is only the third quarter, and as I was saying that, how many, it doesn't say anywhere here, where Liz might have touched upon it, but I think you should have some data on it, how many calls are we responding to with non-insurance for the patient that we're responding to? There isn't a category, or is that other, and that's 1%? I wish that would be much more clearly delineated, so we could see that, and what are you projecting that we are gonna end up having to write off for non-insurance payment, or non-payment billing to patients? And that's just a guesstimate, I won't hold you to it. Thank you.
So, let's just take a step back, and again, you know, I appreciate those comments, I think we all appreciate those comments, but let's wait until we get the analysis. You know, we have a chief who's been here for a week, I met with him today, everyone is very well aware of the overtime issue, and so let's wait until he has a chance to analyze the situation, and provide whatever solutions he might want, working with our town manager, and I'm sure.
Can I just make one comment, Liz?
Sure.
So, on, we're all concerned about the overtime, I just, I do have to analyze it, and what that involves is, every time somebody does overtime, they fill out a sheet, so in a file, it's like this big, is everybody's overtime. The analysis is gonna take place, is I have to go sheet by sheet, and how many of those overtime hours were because of structure fires? We're in essential service. When somebody takes a vacation day, we have to fill that with overtime, so I can't, I can't take the fire department on a team-building cruise, because we have to be in service, so we've all gotta be there. So how many of those are fills for vacation time, and then, you know, how many of those are staff recalls for CPR training, public education, and things like that? So that's, that's the analysis that I want to provide you, that I think will give you that fruitful information that you're looking for, and, and it's not, it's not, well, we started ambulances, now we have a bunch of overtime, we fight structure fires, we do community service, you know, and we have providers that take vacation time, so that's where that overtime number comes from, and I am, I am gonna, I just haven't had time yet, I am gonna do a deep dive on the analysis of why, what categories those fall into.
Great, and chief, that will also correspond to our budget planning for the year.
Right. Yep.
I see a hand back there. Oh, hi.
Marta Gosage, District 9. I kinda wanted to just ask a question in the abstract, not necessarily asking you about your numbers, just as a concept. I get a feeling what Randy was asking is, those of us who have had to use medical services are aware that we pay a co-pay, and then we get a statement, sometimes several months later, or more, saying that our insurance only covered up to X amount, and then there's an additional balance. I kinda feel like that is a concept, may have been what, what he was, Mr. Blodgett was saying? I'm sorry, is that your listening?
Yeah.
Blodgett was saying, so as a concept, do we bill further after reimbursement, in that type of situation?
So, I would, well, I don't want to recite our billing policy that we have in town.
Just sometimes, if, do we ever, is that something we?
So, we have a very stringent billing policy that can be found online, and while everybody is billed equally, some folks within our community, for example, if you are a community member, you, you will receive those bills for 270 days, but then you wouldn't have any more obligation past that.
Okay. I'll look it up online, thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be the best, and that is, it's available right there for.
Great. Any more comments online? Any more comments from the audience in attendance? All right, are we ready to move on?
Get a break?
Uh, we, let's, let's.
Do we have to motion? I will, I will motion that we accept the report as presented.
Great. All select board members who vote to accept the fire department quarterly report, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Another 5-0. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And welcome, chief.
Thank you.
What Isaac said.
Why, yes, let's come back at 8 o'clock.
All right. Time just flies.
Oh, doesn't it? Oh, doesn't it? Okay, back to order. Thank you, everyone. Next is the farm stabilization agreement for Wild Carrot Farm. John, you want to lead us through that?
Yes, actually, our assessor, Jennifer Burnell, will
Oh, Jennifer.
Come up and walk us through this one. Our assessor, Jennifer Burnell, will walk us through this item.
Jennifer, welcome, thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome, thank you for having me. So tonight I am asking the board to consider authorizing the town manager to execute a farm stabilization agreement for Wild Carrot Farm. They just completed a 10-year stabilization with their farm. Farmers Caitlin Burlet and Jesse, I hope I say his name right, KN. And this agreement will only go for one year. I am trying to align all of the farmers' stabilization agreements so that we don't have to keep coming back. We can just do the slate of farmers. We have six total where two farmers basically have two separate agreements due to location. And that's sort of the sum of it. If there's any questions that you have about the program or anything more you'd like me to go into.
Oh, well, a nice little thumbnail sketch of what the program does for farmers.
Yeah, the farm stabilization was set up and voted by the town in '74, and it allows a farmer who qualifies, and that qualification is two-thirds of their income must come from the farm. Minimum size of acreage is 10 acres. And the agricultural products can be dairy, fruits, vegetables. And it's outlined in our tax stabilization procedures, which can be found online on the website, on the assessor's page. I'm going to go back tonight and make sure it's there now that I said that. The, what you are stabilizing is the house and farmland of the farmer, and it's only for the municipal tax, it is not for the education tax. That's. I can't, I can't think of anything more that is involved in the program.
Well, that sounds great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so does the select board have any comments about this application before us?
So full disclosure, our firm, Lilac Ridge Farm, we are enrolled in the tax stabilization program. I talked with Madam Chairperson and Jennifer, and they said that I will not need to recuse myself from a vote for another farm, but when the time comes for our farm to go through this process in front of the select board, I will certainly recuse myself.
Well, thank you, Amanda, that's great. Okay, so are there any comments or are comments from the select board? Comments from the public? Then we're.
I'd like to make a motion.
That would be great, Amanda.
Okay. I motioned to authorize the town manager to execute the farm tax stabilization agreement with Wild Carrot Farm, owners Caitlin Burlet and Jesse KN, for a term of one year ending March 31, 2026.
Great. So Amanda has just made a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the farm tax stabilization agreement with Wild Carrot Farm, owners Caitlin Burlet and Jesse KN, for a term of one year ending March 31, 2026. All select board members, yes? Okay, Dick?
What the amount was that we're stabilizing?
So.
That should have been in the motion, to be honest with you.
The amount is for $212,000. I'm sorry, $212,150.
Great. All right. Are we ready now to vote, having that information? All select board members in favor of the motion, as was read by Amanda and by myself regarding Wild Carrot Farms' farm stabilization agreement, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
All right. Next item is FY26 budget redevelopment. And as you know, we have segmented our discussions on the budget redevelopment in a detailed manner. And tonight we'll be discussing two items. One is finance committee report and structural budget issues, and the other is solid waste. So let me ask John to start us.
Tee it up, okay. So for the finance committee report and structural budget issues item, I provided in your backup materials a copy of the finance committee's report that they put together prior to the March town meeting. And you're asked to discuss this report and offer any recommendations from that that you want to see incorporated into the FY26 budget redevelopment. Also, additional work that we did on this item was we put together information in a table, Attachment B to your backup materials, which is on page 147 of 254. And that table illustrates how the structure of property taxation breaks out between the town and the school for the previously submitted FY26 budget that didn't pass a town meeting. And that, that table shows that, that had that municipal budget at 12.1% passed, it would have meant, it would have resulted in an estimated overall 6.2% tax rate increase on the tax bill when you incorporate the school taxes in on it. And then also in that table were sort of a sensitivity analysis around if you reduced the municipal budget, what does that do to the overall tax rate to bring it down below the 6.2% increase that it would have been with the FY26 budget that failed? Finally, on this item, a document was shared with a select board member who passed along to me, and I included it in this packet. It's that 10 steps document about a structurally balanced budget. And in the, in the memo, I kind of went down each one of those to kind of give an analysis of where the town meets most of those, most of those suggestions, and also address some of the areas where if you wanted to do something different, to maybe point that out, I can go through each of those or whatever you want to do.
Well, let's, let's do it this way. Let's ask Oscar if he'd like to present the RTM Finance Committee report. And after that, and we've discussed it, then we can go to your chart, which I think is very meaningful, and also the 10 steps, making sure that we're all cognizant of what we need to be aware of for redeveloping the budget. Oscar?
Sure, thank you. So I'm just going to go through a couple of the main points in here that I think relate to the structural budget question stuff. Some of them are captured also in the 10 steps to achieving a structurally balanced budget thing that we have. And then also, just for context, like I talked about at the other meeting, I think we should consider, after we've talked about this stuff, if there is, if there are any elements of this that may not result in, oh, we're, we want a line item, that may not result in a change to a line item in the budget, but that we want to, you know, commit to some new process or et cetera. So we can talk about that later in the discussion. I have picked out five sections in the finance committee report. The whole report is in here, so I'm not going to go into huge depth, but the first one is long-term financial planning. I'm not, I don't feel particularly tied to a specific form of document. Also, I guess I should say, this is my interpretation of the report. There were seven people on the committee. I'm sure they have their own thoughts. So I'm just speaking for myself. But I am personally not tied to a specific form of long-term financial planning, but I think we should develop or return to some annual planning document or documents where we say, hey, this is what we think the year is going to be like, ideally with a narrative component and a, like a numbers line item component. It's helpful to help us make better decisions about the budget. It lets people know in the public what's going on, what our thinking is, and it's really useful for just sort of transparency and accountability because someone can look back two years later and say, hey, you said this was going to be paid for by a grant, and then that never happened. What's the deal? So I think it's a valuable tool there. Number two is capital planning. We have some capital plans. I think all of them could at least use a refresh. So I think that would be worth doing. And in particular, I think there are ways we could, we can build out longer-term capital plans than we have now. So that's something we can talk about. Number three is the budget process recommendations, I guess on page seven of the Finance Committee report, using those page numbers. I think most of us on the committee at least would like to see a longer process that starts earlier in the year, that has more public engagement upfront. I think even though, you know, I'm sure I'll regret it in some way. I think it's important that we return to the department-by-department budget sessions that used to happen during budget season where, you know, Carol gets up for Parks and Rec and gives us an overview, and then we can ask questions. Again, it may not transform how we think about the budget, but it's more transparency, it's an opportunity for people in the audience to ask a question instead of, you know, not being able to and, and sort of stewing on it and getting upset when maybe a 10-second answer from Carol could have solved it. Two more, right, so the use, these are similar things, but the use of town funds in the sense of bank accounts. So the use of the emergency fund, we have a 2012 guideline. We should discuss as a board if we want to maintain that policy, if we want to change how it's worded. There has been, you know, people have mentioned the concept of, do we really need a 10% emergency fund? Should the number be changed? I think, you know, it's been 13 years and it just got a bit of a workout, so maybe, I think that would be something worth looking at. And then in general, I think, you know, the town has money sitting around in things like the revolving loan fund, being the biggest example. I think it might be worthwhile to come up with a way to, you know, give some public information about those funds and probably adopt some kind of policy about, here's what we think this should be used for, and then there can be accountability around that. There are other things that I'll talk about later, but those I think are the five really structural balanced budget stuff in the Finance Committee report that I wanted to call out.
Great. So I think we have a bunch of overlapping things. We have the RTM report, and then we have, you know, the 10 points that Isaac brought up. And then we have really kind of a memo about issues from John. And I think if we start from that memo, we can go topic by topic, and I think we'll hit them all. And if we don't, you know, let me know. But let's go that way. And then, so the first one is long-term financial sustainability. John, do you want to tell us what we do now and what we're planning on doing? Because, you know, it would be helpful.
Sure. So the, the first item on that list was adopting a structurally balanced budget. And of course, the town's budgets are always structurally balanced. They, including the one that was just rejected, they balance property taxes within total revenues to achieve a balanced budget. Sometimes the town in the past has planned for deficit budgets. The property tax increases typically balance any increase in the expenditures that are anticipated. So that's how the, the budgets are balanced.
Great. So do anyone, does anyone on the board want to comment about that?
I'd be happy to.
Please.
I'm Isaac here for folks on Zoom. My understanding is actually that the proposed budget for FY26 that the previous select board had passed and had gone to RTM was actually not a structurally balanced budget, given the definition here, which is that recurring revenues, such as property taxes, must be equal to or greater than recurring expenditures. So for example, if we're using funds from reserve, that's not a recurring source of revenue. That's a, that's a fixed amount. This is not, and so that's, that's actually, I think it would be helpful if we could become, just be clear on these definitions.
I'm not sure that we're all in agreement on that statement. Let's have John.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct, Isaac. The budget that was submitted had $25,184,081 in total expenditures, and in revenues, it had the same, $25,184,081. So that balances, that's structurally balanced. What you're talking about is a policy change that happened previous to the submission of this budget. I think you're referring to the emergency that was declared last fall around the police. That was, that, that expenditure was incorporated into this budget, but it did balance against the property tax that was proposed within that budget.
So maybe I could clarify that. I think there's a difference between a balanced budget and a structurally balanced budget. So a balanced budget is where your revenue equals your expenditure. But a structurally balanced budget is where the recurring revenue equals the recurring expenses. So for instance, this, this budget, just to clarify, I think, does it include the FY26 budget that went before RTM? Does that include, in that $25 million of revenue, does that include funds from the, from reserves?
No, does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Oscar?
So I'm gonna, John, I think, well, you're right that the emergency funding spending happened during FY25. I think that the reason the structurally balanced budget stuff came up is coming out of concerns at RTM that the budget presented there wasn't really structurally balanced. And the reason I say that is because expenses line up with, with revenues, and there are no, you know, big transfers for, from fund balance to, to make it work out. But the list of cuts that the select board used to get down to that number did include a lot of, you know, not changes in ongoing spending. So spending from reserve funds. And also, I think a lot of deferring expenses for a year rather than saying, we're not going to do this anymore, which to me is an important distinction. It's, if you hypothetically took as your premise that we can't afford our spending, then I think the structurally balanced approach would be to say, okay, let's find ways to, you know, permanently reduce our spending until it's at a level we like, where I think a lot of the things in that list of cuts got the number down, but they didn't really change the long-term picture. And there are specific uses, and we've talked about some of this stuff, but there are specific uses of, you know, we'll pay off this note, we'll pay off this loan, we'll transfer this grant to capital. I really do think, not only are there a lot of examples like that, but this was a specific. but this was a specific refrain at RTM, how we got, how we performed the cuts and how it might not have been structurally balanced. So.
Go ahead.
So my understanding was the plan was to go through those cuts and examine them at your next meeting on Thursday. And maybe that would be a good time to, to look at like what those are and whether you want to put those into this new version or not.
And let me just say that when we have this discussion on Thursday, I hope that the new select board doesn't raise the budget because RTM certainly didn't want that. So shall we, are we, everyone, anyone else want to comment on the long-term financial sustainability of a structurally balanced budget?
My only other comment would be that I would hope, you know, we would still consider the idea of saying, we want structurally balanced budgets to be, you know, our goal or our policy, that that might be something we would want to affirm.
And I would, I would certainly agree with you, but I would hold out for emergencies that would come up.
Yes.
Anyone else have a comment? Okay, let's look at item two. Recognize that some revenue sources may have both non-recurring and recurring components. Generally in town budgets, estimates of non-recurring revenues, such as volatile sales taxes or grants, have been made conservatively. John, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, no, I think that pretty much says it all. We, we try to not overestimate on sales taxes. That's, that's, that's really, you know, non-recurring revenues. They fluctuate, but, you know, we've been pretty accurate on those guesses for what would come in, in the past. Also likewise with grants, which also you can't necessarily count on as recurring. Those, we, we don't even budget for them pretty much in the general fund.
And the comment that Dick DeGray made today about it being lower that I categorized as mud season, is that, have you noticed a trend of the springtime being less revenue from these one-time sources?
I had, no, I haven't looked at that for this year, no.
Okay, but we could if we wanted to project and so forth. Oscar, do you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay. Identify recurring and non-recurring expenditures. Most of the expenditures in the general fund budget are recurring, with personal expenditures being the largest proportion. The town has tried to put its capital fund on a recurring basis as well, but this is, needs to be updated once the current project inventory and evaluate all town assets has been completed. John, you can further explain what the town attempts, is attempting to do?
Yeah, so on the capital side, we've been inventorying all the assets and trying to get them into a system so that we can do projections over future years on what we, what we should be spending to invest in capital equipment and projects in the current fiscal year. That is a lot of work to do that, and we have very little capacity to do it. So we've been kind of doing it as people find time. One of the things that the board voted for recently was to apply for a capital projects grant to try to accelerate that and hire in a consultant to help us do that. So hopefully we'll get that grant and that will get us on the path.
And hiring a consultant is something that we, we talk about in this budget restructuring in that we're not hiring an employee and we won't have the costs associated with the new employee. We're hiring a consultant who's going to provide a one-time service to update open gov so it can be used for all sorts of analysis, but mostly for long-term planning of various types, long-term planning and capital planning. Okay. Any comment, further comment on that? We all, yes.
Yeah, do we have a timeline of when we would expect to hear back on that grant application?
I can find that out.
Okay, determine target level of reserves. And I think we touched upon this earlier. The town has a guideline target level reserve of 10% of the budget if possible. The board may wish to revisit this level. And that's, you know, as Isaac and Oscar both have talked about, we have 10%, and that was adopted, I think, in 2014 when our budget was about $14 million. And now it's $11 million, larger than that. And so the question is, what do you do with that? Do you, do you increase the budget to, to add to the revenue? And in so doing, you're taxing Brattleboro taxpayers for money to be held in place? And do we want to do that? Because I recall considerable amount of concern about the fact that we were holding space for police officers before they were actually hired. And people questioned why the taxpayers were paying for that amount when police officers had not been hired. But low and behold, that money went to the reserve fund. So that now, what, what had been building up the reserve was future police department salaries. Right? Everybody with me? So what we did last fall was take reserve that had police department salaries at one time, and we used them for police department salaries. So that symmetry is not lost on me. And it was an interesting little turn of fate. But the question remains, do we want to tax the taxpayers of Brattleboro for the sole purpose of building up the reserve? Or do we want to find other means and methods to slowly build up that reserve? And that's really a discussion for all of us to have. How do we want to skin that cat? I've talked to some, some staff members who suggested some innovative ideas to use money that has come, that may come to the state for various purposes. But in general, you know, the overall stomach that the select board may have for taxing the public to replenish the reserve fund is something I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Yes, Oscar.
I'm gonna politely, I hope, push back a little.
Sure.
If that's okay. I think, well, my understanding is, is that 10% is a very common guideline. It's not something that Brattleboro came up with or that was a 2010s thing that is now out of date. It also makes sense for it to be a percentage and not decrease it. I mean, the goal is for it to be something like two months' worth of operating expenses. So it makes sense for it to be a percentage, even if the budget is higher. I would be much more comfortable with the discussion of lowering the percentage if it had happened first. But to have it sort of after the fact, after people, after the money's been spent and people have become upset about it and then to say like, well, did we really need it to be at, at that level? I, I think that would have happened better in the opposite order. And then I, I think there's, nobody wants to tax the taxpayers anything. And I just want to remind people that, you know, if, if you spend money, it's always, you're always spending it. So the, the money left the building when it was spent last year. And however we recoup it, or if we don't recoup it, the, the loss of that money is still a cost. And that cost was generated when the decision was made, justifiable or not. But I don't, I don't want it to be like, you know, okay, new select board members, you've complained about this. Time to put your money where your mouth is and tax the town. I don't, I don't think that's a totally, not that that's exactly what you said.
Is that what I said?
Yeah, I didn't, that wasn't at all my takeaway.
That's sort of, that's, that's how it felt to me. That's what I heard and how it felt to me, so.
Because, because, you know, other people might want to weigh in. But I, there are some, you know, like we could use sources coming in from the state. For example, rebate of local option taxes held in excess of the needs of the pilot payments. So there may be some money on that. Of course, we've been asking the legislature to, to increase the, the local option tax. And also, there's something called the 5% buydown of the property tax rate in the budget bill. And that's another state initiative. So looking to the legislature to increase our revenue and placing that revenue either to, what, what revenue sharing is, to reduce the tax burden and to put that money into the reserve fund might be a nice thing for us to do that is receiving money and, and not, and putting it in the reserve fund without taxing people for it. Or we could think of a small amount of money in an annualized basis to slowly build up the reserve fund. I mean, these are options that we should all be thinking about. And maybe, John, you could explain a little bit more what, what held in excess of the needs of the pilot payment are.
I mean, I heard today that that was not going well in the legislature. So I'm not sure that is going to be an option. But I guess we'll see. We can ask the legislative delegation about that. I mean, really, for the current task that we're on right now is building a revised FY '26 budget, I think putting in a speculative revenue source from the state is probably not where the board is going to want to land. But the, the question on this issue is whether you're going to want to have a line item or some way to at least express your interest in doing this at some level. And so that would be great to know from the board as I'm scrambling to put together a revised budget, whether that's something that three of you at least want to do or more.
And, and that would involve making reductions somewhere to account for placement of a certain amount of money in a reserve fund and what that amount would be. And so do we want to, in principle, talk about our willingness to do that now and then specify a certain number when we're talking cuts in revenue? That's one way to do it, or do you want to?
Another way to do it would be just to plan more revenues than expenditures. So just building the reserve through a budget that's not structurally balanced, but that's actually out of balance in the favor of building the reserve, so.
So question. So I'm, I'm like, kind of the parts of the budget that I understand the most are generating revenue. And I guess it's, it's my understanding that this, this fund which was established in 2011, is that correct?
Ish, something.
Probably don't know that.
I wrote it down.
Oh, all right.
The policy was adopted November 6th, 2012 by the select board, the fund balance guideline.
Okay. So we hadn't had this fund prior to that? Is that my understanding?
That's my understanding.
All right. And how many times since it was established, has it been used? Well, I mean, we know, I know of one.
My understanding is it was used once for the purposes that the last select board did in, in the fall. So since that time, there hasn't been a need for it.
That's incorrect.
It, that is not incorrect. The, at least the information that I have from staff who've been here since that time was that we never needed it for COVID. We never needed it for the flood in 2011. And those were the.
Patrick Morland, that's incorrect.
That was, my information was from Patrick Morland. So I don't know what to say to that.
Excuse me, but if you would like to speak to this issue, you'll wait until the public?
I was told that if a piece of information was incorrect, it caught point of order. That's what I was told to do.
Well, there's obviously a different, difference of agreement of what Patrick Morland told you and what Patrick Morland told John Potter. And I'm going with what he told John Potter.
And it was my understanding that the, the funds were assigned and then not used in favor of said grant.
Yeah, there was a grant.
Right. So, so in fact, it's only been used one time, I guess. So I understand the need for a rainy day fund. I don't hate the idea. I know what we had and what, what it got used for in this last go-around. You know, I have, I have my speculations as to why people are having problems with it. And, and I guess, you know, I, I can understand that. But I think that the plan that was put forward using that solved issues on, on many different levels. And over, as I've stated before, over the hundreds of conversations I've had over the people that have shown up as an emergency level spend for the way people were feeling within that moment. So, but that's a little off-topic, so.
I didn't.
Oh, I thought you wanted to say something.
Okay, so let's talk about, you know, how does the board feel about a 10% reserve? Is that something that they want to hold on to and work towards in the coming, in this budget and in future budgets?
Are we trying to recoup this all in a year?
We couldn't possibly.
No, of course not. So are we talking about a plan as to how long it's going to take us to recoup that?
I think what we should look for is, A, that we like 10% and we want to keep the 10%, if in fact we do. And then I think we need to talk about all the other funds that are available in town government if there were an emergency. And I'm going to ask this guy here for that. And then we should talk about, really, if we're reimbursing ourselves to the 10%, how much this year and what we can project for future years? So right now, what we have in front of us is the restructuring of this budget from, and this general fund budget. So what are people's thoughts about? Obviously, we're not going to add a million dollars to the budget.
Right.
So what do we think is prudent and worthy of our taxpayers in, in this year? People have thoughts?
I have a couple of thoughts. And they are this. Could we consider a compromise where?
I think, I think we all need to be a little bit louder.
Can you hear me? Could, would, could we entertain a compromise where our target level of reserves is 8% for the next five years with the intention of recouping it to 10% at, at intervals over that five-year period or commencing at the end of a five-year period? So just a creative kind of compromise. Or maybe we keep it at nine and we work back towards 10. Or, so some kind of, the goal of 10, but maybe economic conditions over the next five years will not let us do that. So just a, just a thought.
Oh, that's a very interesting thought. What do people think about that?
I think it's a great idea to set a target of getting to 10%. And I would be interested in seeing a, a timeline or a proposal for how we would do that over the next five to 10 years.
Yeah, I mean, we have been talking about the strategic financial planning, five years, and then like longer capital plan. I don't know if five years is a general target that we want to go for long-term planning or we want something longer.
What do you think about that, Oscar?
Well, I think. Well, um, I think it's a good idea. I think the problem is, um, we're not going to get anywhere close to eight for a long time even. I, we're probably at like three and a half now, if I had to guess in my head. Um, if we put 100K into the budget every year for it, which would be a lot, it would take us maybe 14 years to get back to 10%. Um, and that 10% is going to move up as the budgets increase, so. We, and, and that only, if we have a surplus some year, then great. We have more general fund budget that eats away at it. But it's not like it's, um, hard to imagine running a deficit and then all of a sudden you might be set back a bunch. And if we, if we do run a deficit, that's where, you know, these numbers start to edge down towards zero, um, in the unassigned fund balance and starts to get, uh, a little nervous-making, so.
Okay, so, so let's, let's hold that thought.
Sure.
While I ask John. John, what are the other sources of funds that can be called upon in an emergency?
Well, we have a lot of cash reserves in, um, utility fund, a little bit in parking, the revolving loan fund. Uh, we probably have something like, I don't know, they, uh, someone told me some point ago, like maybe around 5 million that's sitting there, so we're not, like, if, if our concern is having two months of operating revenue, we, we've got that. Um, we don't need a reserve in the general fund necessarily to do that. You would have to recoup any use of a u- utility or potentially the revolving loan fund, so that, that's a consideration. But there, it's not like, it's not like we're in a crisis or anything that there isn't, there isn't money available to the town, so.
And this, but the parking fund that we've just talked about is a little problematic because we need that money to pay ourselves back from the deficit within the parking fund, right? So, I wouldn't count on that.
Yeah.
Anyone else want to comment about, um, the reserve and how to get there?
Yeah, uh, no, I mean, I, I, I don't hate Amanda's idea at all. I think it's, uh, but I'm, I'm also hearing what Oscar's saying, like, you know, at a rate of X, it's going to take forever. But I also think that these conversations are extremely fluid throughout the year, where things might pop up. Um, and we can figure out ways within the year. I think it's important to set sort of a target. Sorry, I don't mean to keep having my back to you. I think it's important to set some sort of a target. A goal, if you will, to sort of try to, to get there in ways that we can manage while constantly paying attention to what's coming around the corner that we might be able to take. I mean, the last thing we really want to do is, is tax more. I don't think that's the purpose of this board, so if we can figure out ways to really mitigate that and, um, and get creative. Like, uh, perhaps ta- uh, cat licenses is a good one.
Yes, well, we're going to be discussing that on Thursday.
Thursday, sorry.
It's, it's Bring Your Cat to Work Day. Yes, John?
So, I just have a question for the board. Uh, like, thinking about a five-year period, is there a place that you want to be in terms of a percentage of, um, reserve in the general fund? Do, do you know what that is?
It's a big question.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Liz, I think maybe you even said this. I think maybe the first thing we decide is what is our overall goal? Like, do we want it, in an ideal world, what do we want? Is it 10%? If it is, how do we get there? What does that look like?
But I also like the baby step of, of, not even baby, but a compromise step of eight.
I guess I'm just not totally understanding how that would work, like, because it would take so long to get to eight anyway, that our target would be eight and then we'd be putting, you know, 50K a year into it.
I think it's more of a psychological benefit of, of, of something that's slightly more achievable in a slightly shorter run. Uh, would you say that that would be the purpose, Amanda?
Um, I just know from, uh, my experience running a small business that it's hard to take big gulps sometimes and you have to take little sips. And you have to look longitudinally, longitudinally and, um, be judicious about, about building a reserve.
Yeah, I can.
So, I mean, I'm honestly not very good at it in my business, so just full transparency. Sometimes expenditures come and you just have to deal, so.
Well, I, it's interesting because I think the board is all made up of entrepreneurs.
I would, I, I would say two, two.
Or, you know, a single, aren't, aren't you your own business?
Uh, I do not run a business, no.
But you, you own your own nonprofit?
I do direct a nonprofit.
There you go.
But to, to Amanda's point, you know, there, there are bills that come due for me that when I place my order, I have sometimes a short window in which to pay for it and sometimes a very long window in which to pay for it. So, if I'm going to use the long window analogy that we have here and as Amanda, uh, presented, there is a, a way that we have to, have to pay that bill. But if I have a long window, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take little bites out of it before it becomes due so that by the time it comes due, it's either done or it doesn't hurt as much. And I think that is, I think is what you're trying to say, so we, we need to get back to this number. And there's no quick way to do it. Um, so, taking small bites out of it and, and, and adding to it is not a bad approach.
Well, I think there are quick ways to do it, but they wouldn't be advantageous for our community at this point in time.
I'll just back up and say not quick ways that we're willing to propose, I think. I mean, we, we could just add that line budget right into the old budget and see how that flies, but that's not going to happen.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, are we settled to open this and the previous topics open to the public at this time?
Yeah.
I'm good with that?
Yes, John?
I'm still not clear, like, on building a budget for a week from Thursday. If, if we're like at four and a half percent right now, do you want to increase that in a five-year time frame? Do you want to have that be bigger? And, and i- if you can give me that kind of guidance, I can start trying to put that in, but I, I just need to know.
Uh, well, I think that we do, and the question is how much over what time?
How would you feel about tossing it to the audience and then we come back at the end and tie it up?
That'd be great.
I, I would love to say one thing. Um, so, you talked about the utility fund, right? Which is due to circumstances is ample right now and is very important and necessary when the time comes. But, uh, just thinking about, say, uh, long-term capital plan stuff or DPW, would it be possible to offset a, a budget cost of an item with some use of a utility fund? Or, I'm, I'm getting into the weeds here, but I guess I'm just, I know our budget hawks hate the shuffling piece of budgeting, um, but.
Well, so, the utility fund is sep- uh, what we're talking about here is a general fund.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking about, I mean, I'd love to have a conversation when we structure the budget, just like, what is our policy on shuffling? Because I think what we've been doing is shuffling.
And what, what John was saying was that there are other, if there was an emergency and our 10% emergency is not sufficient, knowing that we've never used it except for last fall. If that's the case, then in an emergency, then we could go, but we're not suggesting shuffling. We're suggesting that there are other points of revenue to tap in an emergency. So, that distinction should be made. Um, let's hear from the public, shall we? David?
Thank you, David Lembach, District Nine. I just want to make it clear for everyone that to the degree that the police department over several years was not at the designated staff level, those unspent salary money went into the, um, unassigned fund balance. But it's not as if after four years, that fund balance went up and up and up. It was always at 10%. And as I understand it, as I, as I said, anything excessive of 10% was then transferred to capital. And as has often been said here, we have aging infrastructure. And so, the extent to which there was excessive fund balance, it was terrific to be able to use that for capital. So that if you never get to that 10% level, and, and God knows, I'm not suggesting you try to get there in one year. I'm not sure how many years it would take, uh, but, you know, I recognize you have a serious problem there. But you ought to recognize that excessive fund balance is, has been very useful in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes.
I'm Marta Gosic again. Um, I just wanted to say that since January and when this budget was, um, starting to gel up and finalize and it, there was going to be such a, a large tax increase, I think I probably talked to, I mean, probably over a hundred of my neighbors and friends who are taxpayers. And the message I got from them was, this year, we cannot handle this tax increase. So, when you're talking about whether to start this year to, or anything in the budget that we're currently talking about to replenish these funds, I would say not have, having a tax increase less than 12.5% is the goal of my friends and the people I have talked to. And, um, well, you know, and then going forward next year, some of this conversation might be more, more germane. But my understanding is from the residents I know, um, it would be more important to reduce the, this tax increase this year than it would be to start thinking now about replenishing this fund.
Thank you. Uh, Dick Seipit?
Dick, you're muted.
When the legislators were there, Dick DeGrae, District Eight, they talked about the 1% going to 75% reimbursement back to the town instead of 70%. Uh, I believe unless John has different information, that that's going to be part of the budget process. So, I would be taking the 5% uh, from that and putting it towards the deficit that you have with the reserve fund. The previous speaker was correct that anytime there was a excess of the 10%, boards were using it for, uh, a number of, uh, things that they were trying to do. I certainly agree with you, Liz, when you said if we put money in, we're going to have to reduce the budget someplace else. But I, I, I believe that the fund was established in 2012. I was the chair of the board. And so, here you are at 13 years, in reality, that the fund was never used for an emergency. Except for last year when they deemed the downtown situation an emergency and that's up to, for debate. So, the reality is we haven't had to use that fund. And so, trying to get it back up to the 10%, which I agree with, could be done at a much slower process. And as John said, we do have funds available if we do incur an emergency. So, when you think about it in totality, uh, I think we need to take baby steps. And it doesn't make any difference what the percentage is. You could say 5% and it's still a couple of hundred thousand dollars that you're going to have to get in there. And so, how you do that, uh, if you re- reallocate some of the 1% money to go towards it. And I, and I doubt very much if we're going to have a surplus this year. It looks to me, anyway, like we're going to have a deficit. So, any funding of that 1% is going to have to come from a, a, a source other than surplus funds. So, that's my take on it. Uh, and I'm looking forward to hearing other people's suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Yes.
Hi, Randy Blodgett, District Seven. Um, I definitely like Amanda's idea, but I think the one issue that got brought up is what is the end result? What is our budget going to be? I mean, cost of living, you could say, and what is that today? Is it four something? Is it nine? You know, if you take the average where we've been on inflation this year, it's a bouncing ball that nobody seems to be to grab on to. So, I know it's less than 12 and I wouldn't, you know, I'd like it less than 12 as well, so I'm guessing you're going to be somewhere around at least six. But with that said, we're talking about fiscal responsibility. We're talking about long-term planning. We're talking about all these things. I think if that 1% or some portion of that is available from the state, great, we use that. But to be financially responsible, and, and we got to be longer than five years. It needs to be a five, 10, and 20-year plan. And whether you deviate or not, hey, that's what you deal with as a select board each year. But I think you need to put some money this year towards Amanda's plan and say, definitely 10 years. I don't think five years is an achievable thing without huge tax increases because if you're talking about 1.4 million and you're talking, you know, we're at four and a half, like, those numbers, you know, throw it on just simple interest like buying a car and then with, you know, three, four, or 5% inflation rate each year, it's like Oscar said, you know? So, I, I would vote somewhere in that 5, 6%. Figure out what we need to cut, hopefully, you know. Unfortunately, EMS, fire, roads, police, our calls are only going up. I mean, all the reports you read, and we're putting how many more housing units online in the next year to two years? And those calls are going to go up even more. So, I'm really concerned about that. So, I think we do need to have some type of increase, but it's not 12%. I'm hoping we can get in that 5, 6%.
Thank you, Randy. Yes.
Uh, Nell Mayo, District Eight.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Nell Mayo, District Eight. Uh, I think this is something we probably all have on our minds. But with the current federal situation, like the example we were just talking about was a grant being able to be used for Irene as opposed to the reserve fund. I think we are looking at a situation where we are seeing a lot more devastating flooding in Vermont and I think we're looking at a situation where we're seeing a lot less federal relief, a widely unpredictable, uh, federal government, right? So, I think that that is just a point in favor of having a reserve fund. I take the point about the roughly perhaps 5 million in cash assets that could be used. And I'm sure it's on everyone's mind, the, the state of our country at large. Um, I also, this could be my understanding, it could be my opinion. I don't quite necessarily see a difference in terms of what Oscar was talking about and what Amanda was talking about, except for Amanda succinctly put together something, whereas like what Oscar was saying was, you know, roughly not even as a proposal, but 100K over like 14 years would bring you back up to that, right? Um, I don't really think there's any difference in what they were saying there. They're both saying you have to get up to a really large number over more manageable amounts over a long term. And then John is asking, what do you guys actually want to be planned for, right? Um, so, to me, as a observer, trying to, trying to type everything that's being said, it seems like there's roughly an agreement for the importance of the fund and it seems like there's not necessarily even a too much of a conflict over that amount being close to 10% if not at.
Well, thank you for that summary, Nell. And here we are. Um, so, I think we've, uh,
That was well said, that was great.
Sort of decided some things, um, in, in Nell's words, to be less controversial. So, we, we agree in principle that we need a reserve budget. We agree that it should be 8 to 10%, but that we should take baby steps and work on a long-term trajectory to get there. I'm seeing nods.
Uh, I don't, I don't disagree. I don't, I'm going to leave it up to you. Tell John how to do it, because I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know.
And so, and so, so what it, what it is that we're about is to make these policies and then, um, you know, tell John, this is what our policy. tell John, this is what our policy is. And then he's the one who's going to be, based on Thursday's discussion about the cuts and the revenue, assigning an amount that we think we can live with without taxing the populace too much to get to slowly build that fund. Because the important part for this discussion is to agree that it's necessary. And to agree that we need to work towards it. I, I think that's more important than whatever number that we assign to it. Because the number that we assign to it is going to come on Thursday and not today. Does everyone concur?
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I mean, ideally, I think if we, as a board, can agree on a, on a commitment, you know, over the next 14 years, and then be held accountable by the public. Like you said, you're going to put $100,000 every year towards, and that could come from cuts or other revenue streams. But we, we need the discipline to make it happen, is what I think we need to accomplish.
Right.
For the community.
And I think what will help us get there is that chart that John attached. But we're still working through these structural issues. So let's get, when we've had a certain amount of resolve here, let's go forth and look at, I think we just finished number five, which is adopt a one-time revenue policy, town has guidelines for general fund using excess unassigned fund balance of, is that where we are?
Yep, we just finished five.
Yeah, okay. So engage in long-term financial planning. We've kind of touched on that. John, do you want to further elucidate that?
Sure, I'm, I'm working on a, on a projection that I would hope to bring back to you a week from Thursday. But I need to know some of the inputs, like, you know, are you trying to get, if you're trying to get a long-term reserve increase, like, if it's over 14 years, that's great. I can project it over 14, or if it's less, I, I just, if I know that kind of input, then I can give you a draft budget that shows that. But unless you tell me kind of what, what direction to go, I don't, I don't really know what to do there.
Do you have thoughts?
I do, but Isaac also made a move.
Yeah, my thought is, what Marta shared is something that I've heard from many residents, that more than 12% increase is too much.
Of course.
And so I would
That's why we're all here.
I think that's part of it. I think it's also people wanted to hear us have this discussion around the, the longer-term financial planning. I'm really pleased to hear that you're working on that pro forma budget for FY '27. And my thought is, can we have a line item that's a contribution to the reserve that's nominal? That's even $5,000, $10,000, something like that? That, so that we remember, and that it's a placeholder, so that we are discussing that when we're looking at FY '27? And then
Are you, I'm, I'm sorry, just want to, clarification, are you just talking about what we just talked about? Like adding that in for a line item is, like, hey, psh, psh, don't forget about me?
Yeah.
Okay.
To have contributions to the reserve.
In this budget.
In FY '26.
And then in the '27.
And then FY '27, start making more significant contributions. It's $100,000 a year, you know, would be one, one number that was thrown out. And we could, it would be interesting to see how long would, how long would that, going at $100,000 a year increase, how long would that take to get back to 10%?
Yeah, so it would really be in agreement in principle. And, and, and then there's a line item for this year that we can play with on Thursday when we're talking about cuts and revenue.
Yeah, that's my thought.
So is that a motion? Please.
We, do we need, do we, do we need a motion for this?
Well, I'd, I'd like to get some guidance so that I can start working on this.
So, so remind me what you're prepping for Thursday, that
So for a week from Thursday.
Okay.
I'm working on the
The draft budget.
The draft budget, yeah. Yeah.
So, um, well, Isaac, make a motion.
I just, for clarification,
Sure.
I, I know John had kind of reviewed, like, our trajectory, and we had agreed that our next meeting is going to be about revenues and cuts. And so would that create a more realistic number to go with? Rather than us kind of throw, throw something out right now for a motion?
Yes, but
Could you, could we wait till next meeting?
I think what, what Isaac brought up is something that we can do absent our Thursday discussion. I'm all for our Thursday discussion. But I believe Isaac was, Isaac was saying an agreement in principle to work towards this 10%. We've agreed on the 10%. That we're going to get, take baby steps to get there in the ensuing years. And Isaac's innovation was to have a nominal line item for this year's budget. And so if we start with $10,000, then
It's a placeholder.
Then depending, it can be altered on Thursday, but it gives John guidance for the following Thursday of a budget with a movement towards a 10% reserve fund.
I don't, yeah, I'm
Thanks for the clarification.
Is that your motion, Isaac?
Yes, I would
You make that motion.
My move that we, that the select board set a policy of maintaining a 10% reserve fund. We're 10% of our annual budget.
Okay. And do you further reserve? Do you further move to have incremental increments in future budgets? To achieve that over many years, a year to be named later? And do you further suggest that in the FY '26 budget, there's a nominal amount of perhaps
Do we say nominal, or do we say a number?
$10,000.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the entirety of your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm noticing that the transcript
Has been working for about a half an hour.
Okay, great. I'll try to take some notes here, too.
Uh, John, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I just, since you already have that policy on the 10%, it's really more the, what do we do for the
Get there.
To build this budget, that's
I didn't see the, the policy in that 2012 document, around the 10%. Is that, that's in a different policy somewhere documented?
It's in a guideline for having a 10% if possible, so.
Okay, so then I would just modify my motion to affirm that.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, people, anything else we'd like to say about that motion before we vote on it?
It would probably be helpful for Jessica to hear that one more time, exactly what
All right, I'll give it a go. Isaac has moved to confirm the select board's policy of a 10% reserve fund. He has further moved to achieve that 10% in incremental spending over many years. And that in this FY '26 budget, there'll be a nominal amount of perhaps $10,000 in good faith towards the reserve, 10%.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Maybe, could I suggest an amendment?
Sure.
To the word many years, that we actually articulate an actual, like, no greater or less than blank.
10 to 15?
No less than 10 to 15 years.
10 to 15. Let's hear from David.
Yeah, I see, I see some nods, being like, mm, mm.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to say about baby steps, David Lovemark, District Nine, is that if the budget goes up by $1 million a year, $100,000 will not add to the reserve fund. So you need a very big baby with very strong legs if you're going to get there in 10 years, which is a long period of time. I mean, this guideline is from 2012, so it's 13 years old. So you're talking about the full length of that to get back. So, you know, I, I think you're moving in the right direction. But I just want to caution that as the budget increases, you're still lagging behind in getting that reserve up. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Are we clear on our action? Are we all in agreement? Shall we vote on it? I've made a, Isaac's made a motion that I paraphrased.
I can read it back.
Go ahead, read it back.
So I move that we affirm the policy of the select board of maintaining a 10% reserve fund and achieve this incrementally over a number of years.
I think we said 10 to 15. Amanda modified it. If you accept that modification.
Over 10 to 15 years. And this year of FY '26, we will commit an, a nominal amount of, up to $10,000 towards us.
Or I wouldn't say up to, I would say, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's great. That's probably enough to get you a draft. And then if you want to change it at that point, when you see what the other numbers are, you can
Great. Okay, folks, all in favor of Isaac's motion, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Yeah, jeez.
5-0. Come on, you got to vote for your own motion. Okay, um, let's
Let's still hang in there.
Move on, shall we? Have we talked sufficiently about engaging in long-term financial planning? I think we have.
The one
Yeah.
The one point I wanted to make is, a pro forma FY '27 budget will be helpful for us, and that's a valuable part of it. I feel particularly strongly that we also need to develop new, ongoing, long-term financial planning plan, or documents, or whatever it is. So a lot of this stuff is, on, on my list and on this list are not things that need to change in this budget or that we're going to do over the next month. But things like that, I personally feel as one out of five up here, if we can make some general commitments to, hey, we're going to take a new look at, at how we do long-term financial planning next year. Hey, we can take a look at a, at a new, you know, a
Right.
Longer budget process, so
And we've already talked about the, moving towards that
Right.
By having the planning grant, getting the funding to hire the consultant to put the inputs into OpenGov so that OpenGov can be used to its fullest extent to have a long-term plan, long-term financial plan.
I think that's good. I, I don't want to tie ourselves too strongly to the OpenGov train. Or, or I guess what I mean is, I don't want to make too much of this contingent on OpenGov because it's, it's, it's proved to be, you know, complicated and challenging. I, I hope that there, even if everything isn't in the software in FY '27, there are still very straightforward things we can do around, you know, like a long-term planning narrative and the five-year projection and stuff like that.
Right. Well, certainly a long-term planning narrative and, and a, you know, but I'm not throwing out OpenGov because the town spent a lot of money on it. And all we need is, you know, time spent with the inputs so that we get the outputs that we essentially been promised with Ocean Gov, OpenGov. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it on the shelf yet.
No, no, and I don't want to throw it out, and I want to get all the use we can out of it. I just don't want, in the FY '27 process, to be saying, like we said last year, like, well, it's not in OpenGov yet, so maybe, I, I want long-term financial planning, one way or another, to be a big part of the FY '27 budget.
Okay.
But if, if people, if any of this stuff, if, if people aren't feeling it, it's a board decision. I'm just wondering if there are commitments on this list that we do want to make, because I think they would go a long way.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I understand why you're saying it. I just, and, and I think some long-term look ain't a bad idea, all right? I'm, I'm not, like, rising up against it. But even though one of the biggest things we do up here is the budget, there are still many other things that need to be done throughout the year. So, like, lengthening the budget process is
Sure.
Yeah, so, I, I'm just saying, so by lengthening the budget process, you increase the budget.
A little.
Yeah, so, well, I mean
Here's the thing, though, I mean, and, and this accounts to, you know, reserve fund and the budget process. And the work of the town is more than the budget. The needs of the town are ultimately the decision-making that creates the budget. So if you look, for example, at, you know, the elephant in the room is, you know, that the, the community safety, public safety emergency is what prompted the need for the Ratt team and One Rattaborough, for example, the downtown safety plan. So that was the work of the, of the select board and the, and the town for much of the year. And yes, it certainly had an impact on the budget. But you have to decide at some point, is it the tail wagging the dog? The work of the town was to fix the problem. And it had certainly budget implications. But our responsibility to the town is not just to the budget, it's to the needs of the community.
May I say something? I think you're both right. I think you're both right. I want to back up Oscar on this, because it never hurts to plan ahead, even if your projections are incorrect. I back you up on that. I think it would be helpful to do. I had a great meeting in the Finance Department today, and OpenDoc of it's working well. I don't know if it's for, like, budget projections, but there are a lot of efficiencies happening there. We're on a good momentum, on a good roll. So let's keep it rolling with doing exactly what you're suggesting and in full consideration that there's a lot of other stuff to, that we have to get done in the town. And it might not be as painful as we think.
Yeah, I think we can, you know, walk it you go. Do the work of the town. But if we use the software that we have, that we're paying for, that we get the input that we need to do the long-term planning, which is essentially the last piece of the puzzle for OpenGov, and let OpenGov do the work that is, has been promised. I mean, you're concerned that we need belt and suspenders. You want OpenGov, and you want a kind of a back-of-the-envelope narrative. We can do both.
That's not, I, I don't think that's exactly my concern. My concern comes from last year, when people were, you know, ringing the bell about long-term financial planning. And we were basically told, well, OpenGov's going to do that, but it's not ready this year. And all I want to make sure is that that
You don't get told that again.
Exactly, that's all.
And, and we can agree on that.
Great.
So where are we on open items for this list? John, can you tell me where we are?
Well, you've touched on a lot of them.
We have touched on a lot of them.
The multi-year capital plan, this plan to get back into structural balances, Isaac's motion. Communicating with stakeholders is another one of the 10 points. And, you know, and then finally, providing regular reports, which we do. And of course, there was a conversation about is it quarterly, the right frequency, or monthly, or, you know, you can, you can talk about that. I don't know if you need to decide that right now.
I, I think we should work on our budget as a priority, and we can work on those things a, after our, our budget is, is approved. I mean, obviously, we've made some commitments towards structural, long-term, short-term financial planning, reserves, et cetera. But I, I think to ask for monthly reports in a month that we're actively seeking to restructure the budget is excessive.
I, I would be, personally, I, I would understand if we wanted to not do one next month. I think some of the numbers we saw today, I, I'd love to see one more before the fiscal year ends.
And I think that's fair. And I'm sure that, you know, when we get to our And I'm sure that, you know, when we get to our RTM and our past budget, well, you know, John, you'll just be twiddling his thumbs by then.
Oh, sure. And we will, um, we, we have been providing monthly reports, we just haven't verbally gave a presentation.
They're always in our book, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, um...
Big Isaac has been chomping at the bit down there.
Isaac!
Yeah.
You've been chomping at the bit.
To bring some closure and make sure that we understand what our agreement is around financial plan, long-term financial planning, I would like to move that we create a policy of doing five-year financial plans with a 25-year capital equipment replacement plan, um, beginning in the, in, beginning in FY '26.
Twenty, you mean for FY '27?
Correct.
But that we start doing it in the, in the coming fiscal...
In this coming fiscal year, I, I think the, I think we're gonna be pretty busy in the next, was it, two and a half months?
Yes.
Um, with getting this budget together. And I want to be mindful of fact that we're down Finance Director and down Assistant Town Manager, and apparently down Treasurer, and so, no.
No, we have a Treasurer.
Oh, we have a Treasurer. There's something said.
Intra-Treasurer.
Okay. So, in, in light of that, I would just think it's reasonable. We're also talking about five-year, 25-years. I think it's reasonable to, um, you know, we can give ourselves a few months before we start in on this. But that, that would be my, that's my proposal.
And John, is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, we can, we can do...
And you're already working towards that?
Yep.
Yeah.
And ideally, we'll be able to use Open Gov for that as well.
Ideally, yes. Anyone else? David?
Thank you. David Lehmack, District Nine. The 25-year capital equipment replacement plan is, is fine. Obviously, that's, that's a long horizon. But I also wondered, when you talk about five-year plans, I think you also need a five-year capital infrastructure plan, which is a size, separate from a five-year general fund plan. So, for example, we've talked about the pool, we've talked about, uh, DPW facility, and there may be other things, and I think that needs to be articulated in a planned way as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you for that suggestion, because those are also opportunities for fundraising, grant funding, et cetera, to have those on the, on the line in the short term. Absolutely.
And I'm sure, John, that those are already on your horizon. Okay.
Quick, so I think, you know, I, I'm not gonna be a, a stickler for the stuff I think we've talked about, and there's been sort of general openness to a, a lot of these topics, like maybe doing something differently, or looking at something a different way. So I'm, I'm pretty content with that. I hope we'll all, um, you know, like when next budget season starts, we'll all be in a similar frame of mind and open to new ideas for budget processes and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have amnesia.
Okay, great. I'm just checking to see if there's, the one thing I wanted to specifically ask about, I think, responding to Randy earlier, I, we would have to go in with like a, like a, uh, machete to get this budget down to five or six percent. I would be more interested personally, since we're in this compressed timeline of doing less now, but possibly as a board committing as a goal, understanding that things change, but committing to, okay, next year, when we have four months, we have a target tax increase of three percent, or four percent, or something like that. And to me, that takes a ton of weight off of the question now of, oh, is this a deferral? Is this a long-term savings, stuff like that? If we commit to doing that work for the next budget, I'm much more comfortable with making fewer changes now. So, I'm not, I'm just putting that out there, seeing what people think about it.
I'm not sure that we've ever done that. I'm sure that, you know, there was guidelines, um, and, and certain amount of, of, uh, hope that we would be within a certain range. But I think, I think that the next discussion of this chart that John put together... Oh, is there? Did we vote on that?
We did not. I'd like to...
Sorry, Isaac.
If I may, I'd like to incorporate David Levinbach's suggestion.
Which is?
And which is that we create a five-year capital infrastructure plan that would include things like the pool, the roads, that sort of thing.
Yes.
So, I'd like to, if I may, restate my motion, which would now be that, beginning in FY '26, the town of Brattleboro will produce a five-year financial plan.
FY '27?
No, in '26, in the coming fiscal year, we would create a...
In the, in the calendar year of '26, we're creating the budget for FY '27, because the budget that we're working on now, the budget that we're all concerned about now is FY '26.
Correct.
So when you're talking about planning the next budget, you're talking about FY '27.
But I think you're talking about creating it during FY '26.
Yeah, but that's too confusing.
Okay.
Because what we're talking about now is the FY '26 budget. But we have to get to RTM, it's the '26 budget.
Correct.
So if you're planning the next year's budget, you're planning FY '27. You may be planning it in calendar year '26, but it's the FY '27 budget.
That would be the first year of the five-year plan.
So if you are making a motion, please use FY '27 before we all lose our minds.
Okay.
Well, if you, if you say '27, then the planning has to happen in '26.
In '27, in FY '26.
Maybe that the plan, the first year of each plan will be FY '27?
Yes.
Is that...
Yes. So, the motion is that the town of Brattleboro create in, uh, for, begin, for the period beginning July 1st, 2026.
Just say the FY '27 budget.
Beginning FY '27, but it's not the FY '27 budget that I'm talking about, because it's a five-year plan or a 25-year plan. Do you follow me?
I do follow you, but I still want you to use the convention of when we're planning the FY '27 budget and its long and short-term children, you use FY '27 as the starting date.
Okay. So, how would, how would you phrase that?
I would just, everything that you said, just remove the FY '26 and just say FY '27. Because we have to start, because right now, what we're trying to get across the finish line is FY '26.
I under, I understand that, but if, Liz, if you could just phrase...
You just substitute '27 for what you said of '26, and I'll be perfectly happy.
We're not gonna do the planning in FY '27.
For.
We're doing the planning for FY '27. Beginning FY '27, okay, I got it. So for the period beginning FY '27, we will create a five-year financial plan, a five-year capital infrastructure plan, and a 25-year-old, I'm sorry, 25...
Wow.
25-year capital equipment replacement plan.
Oh, if we were all 25 again. Okay. So, uh, everyone good with that motion? You're not gonna make me read it again, are you?
I'm not.
Not necessary.
Okay, good. All Select Board members in favor of Isaac's second motion of the evening, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you. Pass is five zero. John has the guidance that he needs.
Yep, thank you.
And I would really like John to explain his handy-dandy chart on page 148 of 255, because I think it's really important to understand the ramifications of the FY '26 budget and its re, planned restructuring. John?
Yeah, so, um, this, this table, what it shows you is the impact of the combined municipal and school tax on what the property tax...
Hold on, let me just ask.
Yep.
Can you hear, John?
Excuse me. So this table explains the combined impact of the municipal tax and the school tax on the actual property tax bill that people will receive in the mail. And so, if you look, it, it shows FY '23, '24, and FY '25, what happened there. Uh, and then this table also shows the budget that we're kind of starting with in, in this process, the FY '26 budget that went to RTM. And that shows that the, um, total property tax collected in that proposed budget was 19.8 million for, uh, the municipal taxes, and 21.2 million for the, uh, school taxes, for a combined, uh, school, property tax bill that would collect a total of 41 million, which is a 6.2% increase over fiscal '25. So the, the, really, the, I think the take-home message here is that we're in a year when the school tax is going to be considerably lower than it has been. And so, the impact of that lower school tax on the property tax bill is significant, so that a 12-point, a 12.1% increase in the municipal tax only translates to a 6.2% increase in the property tax bill. Then, if you look at, on the out columns in this, uh, in this chart, it shows you how much you could bring it down even further with a reduction in what's in that 12.1% budget. So, the first one is if, if you, if you all find a way and you want to reduce the budget by $100,000, you can get the property tax bill rate down to 5.9%. And if you reduce the budget by 250,000, you can get the property tax bill rate down to a 5.5% increase. And if you do 500,000 reduction on the, the municipal tax, you can get it down to a 4.9% tax rate increase on the property tax bill. That's what this table shows, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have about it.
Well, I think this is a great table, because I think it gives us Select Board members targets of our next meeting and where to cut and where to add revenue, so that we can be somewhere in between, I would like to think that we could achieve somewhere in between the last two columns. And, and, um, I just want to sort of think about that as something that, um, we could achieve and bring to RTM and have the conclusion of a successful budget process. And I'm going to ask the Select Board members what they think before I open it to the public. Do you have any thoughts?
Not right now, I think.
Nobody?
I mean, I'm, you know, this is kind of having your cake and eating it too, a little bit, in a bad situation.
Well, I just, I just think that cutting from 250,000 to 500,000 is achievable. I don't think necessarily that the larger amount is achievable, but somewhere in between the two is achievable. And, you know, um, knowledgeable budgetary hawks in the town of Brattleboro have sought me out to tell me that they think it's achievable. And so, I'm on that bandwagon.
Well, it, you know, it's, this table is really helpful, because I think a lot of people think, now having seen this in its entirety, and I, and I have to be honest with you, I was so focused on our number, um, I literally forgot about the school budget number. So, thank you to the school budget for coming in there.
Yes, well, I, I, looking at last year, which we like to call FY '25, is, um, very telling, because, um...
It's actually this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is true.
This current year, you know, the, the percent increase of the taxes collected for the school was huge. And, um, you know, people grumbled, and, and people paid it. And, and, uh, nobody, you know, the kind of boomerang effect of what we're seeing now is, is helpful to us in terms of what we're asking of our taxpayers to pay.
But I think it's important, moving forward, when we talk about these things, that if, if we're using a benchmark of 12.1, that we're not really, we're using a 6.2. I mean, overall, as the worst-case scenario, that the, that the Brattleboro taxpayer would pay.
Well, for example, if we, um, you know, if, if RTM had made some different decisions, you know, our overall budget could have been less. So what we have to do is create a budget that reduces our overall spending, and then we have to recognize that there's 2% of human service spending tacked onto it.
Okay.
Yes, David?
I do apologize. David Levinbach, District Nine. You got lucky this year with the school budget, and that may not happen next year. Number one, and I don't pretend to follow this, they're talking at the state level about restructuring education, and you have no idea how that's gonna play out. Second thing is you don't know what's gonna happen to federal funds, Title I, at the school level. So if you want to reduce, and I certainly understand the idea of, of trying to bring in a budget that makes people happier with you, don't do it by deferring things, which you're gonna have to replace next year, when the schools may not be as accommodating. Thank you.
Kate O'Connor.
Kate O'Connor, District Nine. This chart really irritates me, and it irritates me for the reason that Pete just did. People look at it and say, oh, it's only gonna be a 6% increase, not a 12. You folks need to focus on how much money we're spending. Between 2023 and 2000, or FY '23 and FY '26, our budget has increased $3 million. That is totally absurd. So please don't look at this and justify not doing anything, because, oh, it's gonna go down because of the school. You folks need to focus on the town spending. And don't do this just, you know, twisting yourselves into a pretzel, saying it's okay, because the chart says now it's 6%. So I just really want you to focus on what you're doing with our budget, and keep the school out of your mind when you're doing what you're doing.
Okay. Um, I just, can I just respond to that? I, I'm just talking about like a strict fact, that, yes, we are still working to reduce our budget. If I gave the indication that we were doing anything else, I apologize, it was not my intent. But looking at this chart, um, in fact, what the Brattleboro taxpayer will pay, if nothing changed, is 6.2%. So that, 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 that's just a fact. It's not saying that we don't have to take a look at our municipal budget and make cuts, and do all the things that we've talked about here for the entire evening. So I don't, I don't want what I said hijacked and twisted around, that I didn't understand what we were doing here the entire night. I'm just pointing out the fact that we, at, at the, at the worst-case scenario, have dodged a bullet, thank you, School Board.
Randy, did you have a comment?
Randy Blodgett, District Seven. I know that was a fact, 'cause last year's tax bill, when it was gonna be 13 or something, it ended up being eight point something in the final bill I got that we paid. But the point, and I see all of you getting it, but between our salary contracts with unions, with our healthcare, I mean, it's gonna go up based on what I'm reading with the state level and the federal level, all these things are coming at us. And whether we, like, other people have said, whether we take care of it this year, you know, or we take care of it in a month, in two mon, it's gotta be taken care of, so why not start now? And, and maybe it's not a machete, maybe it's somewhere between a scalpel and a machete. But it's gotta happen, because if we don't get control of it, you know, poison ivy sucks. And we gotta get it under control. It's just one little thing, one little thing, one little thing, and, and we just need to start now, not later.
Thank you. Okay, so that was just a presentation of this chart, and, uh... And, uh, I think that we've talked about this ten steps, because it was captured in the memo.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. Um, I just got a message from the interpreters that they had to leave.
Oh.
And, um, the, um, there's currently no captions on the broadcast. Um, so, the option there, if folks, um, do need the captions, they could access that, I believe through their own Zoom account, if they're logged in on Zoom or on Facebook. And, um, if you need help with that, I think that would just be right here, in this caption window on their end. But the live broadcast does not currently have captions affiliated with it.
Thank you, Seth, appreciate that. Okay, so, um, I think that we've addressed, um, yes?
I just wanted, now that we've looked at the chart, to briefly return to the idea of setting a goal of a tax increase for next year. Because I saw, you know, not all shaking heads no at the time. And Sue?
You're talking about FY twenty-six or FY twenty-seven? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Sue.
I think it would be incredibly, Sue Belleville, um, Brattleboro. I think it would be incredibly unfair for you to try to set a target goal tonight when you haven't even fully examined all of the options out there and all of the feedback from all of the items that we're talking about here. We've got, you've got too much on your plate to make that commitment. And some of the items are so incredibly important, that you have to understand the consequences. If you're going to make or recommend, I'll, I'll give you a, for example, that is driving me absolutely nuts. To think that you're so dedicated to putting money in a savings account and sacrificing security and a safety action plan that will benefit the whole community. That, that those kinds of budgetary conversations drive me insane. You cannot postpone the most important investment you need to make in order to grow your tax base, in order to grow your economy, in order to successfully improve your population, you have to make those safety and infrastructure investments. And at the cost of having to pay for it now, or losing everything in the near future. I am so frustrated with some of this conversation, because you've lost the big picture. You've lost the big picture. Please, take a look again.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, you know, I, I must echo, you know, I've said numerous times that our budget is not just a financial piece of paper. It's the needs of the community. And to look at the needs of the community squarely is really what we're about. And, and Oscar, you were asking us to set a target budget, uh, tax rate for next year?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I just think that that's not our, our remit at the present time.
Sure, um, I can see that argument. The reason I bring it up is because, you know, I've been keeping quiet about a lot of big concerns that I have with this budget, because I'm pretty confident that we are going to be back here in September, looking at another twelve percent, and having to have this whole conversation over, uh, a second time. So, I'd like us to either have those hard conversations now, or make the sort of commitment that will require us to have them next year, because...
I'm not committing to a number at this time for next year's budget. I mean, what we're about is talking about this year's budget. And so, I just don't think it's, it's even germane to talk about next year's budget.
Well, I get...
You know, we get this budget socked away and approved, and then we'll talk about, you know, what the needs of this community are for next year.
May I make a, a suggestion? And also respond to what Sue shared?
Go right ahead.
The, first of all, in this conversation about financial planning and thinking about the feedback from the finance committee, that's what we've really been looking at. And we have, next, on Thursday, we're going to be talking about the different cuts that have been proposed. And then, we'll be also having a conversation to talk about, specifically about safety and budgetary implications. So, I think that we're, we're going to go through this process, and we're going to be addressing the concerns that you brought up, Sue. Um, in terms of the issue of the, um, projecting for next, you know, setting a target in terms of the taxes for FY twenty-seven, my suggestion would be that we would wait to see some sort of pro forma budget for FY twenty-seven before we start, um, trying to set some targets. Because that would be useful information in my decision-making and things of looking, okay, what is the impact of the property taxes that we're proposing for this coming fiscal year on what that might be for the following? Um, I, I think having that information before, in front of us would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And I just don't think that, that there's a there, there to even contemplate a tax rate, so, um...
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of in, in agreement, I think, without, uh, knowing really kind of what we're dealing with this year, um, I don't know how we're going to project what we're going to deal with in the following year. It's not that I'm adverse to what you're suggesting, I'm just a little adverse to it at this point. I think if we get a budget passed, we get it through RTM, um, and, and then, we get a, you know, a, a sneak peek at what another thing might look like, then I think we, I think that's a better time to bring up that conversation and make, and I know what you're, you're getting at. You want to make a commitment to people that we're going to work really hard to not have this budget go, insert number here.
Arri.
Right, and, and, and that we're really going to, we're, we're drilling down. I get it. I, I, and I don't disagree, I just, at this point in time, I, I, I just think it's, it's, I don't know, it feels a little reckless.
Speaking of this point in time, Madam Chairwoman, um, I, I'd like to make a motion to table the solid waste discussion for a future meeting, because it is ten minutes of ten o'clock, and I just don't think we have the bandwidth to do it. Um, and I would love to revisit the date of the RTM that we had talked about last meeting.
Well, it's not on the agenda. It would be appropriate to be on the agenda when we have a draft budget in, in our, in our hot little hands.
Right, okay.
So, I'm thinking that we would discuss that on April twenty-ninth, and that is the projected date when we'll be voting on the budget. And, and if you could see your way to projecting the fact that we have thirty days' notice, then you could project that we might be voting on a budget on April twenty-ninth and an RTM on May twenty-ninth. That being said, I don't think we should discuss that any further. Uh, let me ask John, uh, because it, it pertains to scheduling when we could have a solid waste discussion.
Um, well, if, so, no other time than this, really, I don't see it happening if you want to make changes in that part of the budget before doing a draft budget for a week from Thursday. Um, we could do it maybe that day, if you wanted to, but, you know, the assumption would be no changes, uh, uh, I would bring you a draft budget without any changes. But then, if you wanted to talk about solid waste on that Thursday, uh, maybe that would work, I don't know.
I mean, my suggestion is addressing it at the next meeting, when we're doing, um, revenue and, and cuts. That we, that we, that we tap on that.
You, you know, we could try that, but that, there's a lot on that meeting.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be four hours, three or four hours.
I, what, what we'll be discussing at that meeting is, is the really hard choices that the previous select board made, because we're revisiting them. Then we're revisiting the cuts that the previous select board didn't make. And then we'll be discussing everybody's, uh, revenue ideas.
Here's my, my take on it. Like, we have a, we have a, a packed month of two meetings a week. So, um, as much as I don't like being here at ten o'clock at night, um, I think we should tackle this and put it in the rearview mirror. Me personally, I don't, I don't have any magic wand when it comes to solid waste that is going to get us away from anything that was proposed, so...
Well, here's the thing. I, I'm, I'm gravitating to the idea of having it on April twenty-fourth, only because I think that the public needs to hear once again the choices that we made, the efforts that we put forward, that to, to poll the public, to, to see what, what the town wants from a solid waste program. We planned for over a year, we negotiated for six months. And, uh, you know, the, the RTM finance report questioned that. And when we have public hearings, everyone is questioning that process. So, I think it's, it's incumbent upon the select board and the town to explain that process. I don't think it's necessarily going to change the budget. So, that's why Amanda suggested for the twenty-fourth. Would you suggest that?
I actually suggested Thursday.
Oh, yeah, but we don't have time for that.
Our date there.
But we, I think we would on the twenty...
We could earmark it, if we got to it, we could do it, and then move again to another one, I don't know.
That's, that's not how this works.
Um, so, Amanda, we have to warn that, that as a topic.
Okay, so, I have a motion on the floor, which is to table the solid waste discussion and, and give it another option, so, that's, that's my motion, you can vote on it.
And, and, and the reason why I'm leaning towards that is that at ten o'clock at night, the purpose of this explanation for the public to hear is, is not, not available. You know, it's late, nobody's here. So, I want the public to see this, I want the public to hear this, and, um... It, it's not available to us this evening. So, I would be in favor of moving it, yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Carol McManus, District Eight. Um, I just want to express my concern when I was listening Thursday about the proposed, Amanda had suggested that she's had some ideas that she was working on. And I appreciate what you're saying, Elizabeth, about you want to tell people again why the decision was made. But, I had concerns on Thursday, when I was listening, that to have this tonight on the agenda, to talk about what Amanda is proposing, we push ahead, would not give her enough time to prepare and so forth. And I agree, that is ten o'clock at night, there are many more people that would like to give feedback, I'm sure. Um, so, that's all, that's just my little input on that.
So, John, let's talk about April twenty-fourth.
May I also just say, it's not, it means the whole board, yeah, so it's not just the whole board, we, we work together.
I'm sort of curious, is there a point at which the, if we do it too late in the month, does it lose the goal? Like, so, you know, I just want to be sensitive to that, too. If we push it too late, do you not get to present what you want?
Well, it's, I mean, I've, 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 um, had, you know, we all get to meet with our town manager once a week, and, um, I've shared thoughts with John, and we came to some, you know, some thought bubbles. It's almost ten o'clock, all right, just wait, what's going to happen when it actually turns ten? Um, so, you know, I'm flexible, that's my role, I'm a flexible person, so, whatever works, I'm good with. But I don't think ten o'clock at night is a good time to bring up this whole topic. I really, I, I really am not flexible enough.
Okay, so, um, John, what's going to happen on April twenty-fourth? You're going to present some sort of a draft budget?
Yep. I'll, um, that's what I'm, I'm steering towards, trying to get that draft budget put together. Um, it's a lot of work. Uh, that, that's why it's super helpful to know tonight and on Thursday night, what you're, what you want to see in there. Um, I think that we could just warn, uh, the solid waste to be at that same meeting and, and e- explore it there. And if you want to make some changes, then I could do them over the weekend for the twenty-ninth, when you come back and, and look at it, so...
That sounds like a great, great process, thank you.
Well, that's really nice of you, and I understand how hard you're working, and I appreciate it. And, and if we all agree, then let's adjourn.
So, the motion on the floor to table the, the solid waste discussion to the twenty-fourth, that, that does need a vote, right? Because
Sure.
it was a motion?
To the seventh.
No.
To the twenty-fourth.
To the twenty-fourth.
Oh, not to, when we're talking about the cuts?
No, because it's too lengthy.
Usually, if you wanted, I suspect you could withdraw it, and we could just agree. But we can also vote on it.
Oh, okay, if we just have to agree, we'll agree?
We agree. Poof, it's done.
I want to do it.
I thought it, well, I don't, because it was on the agenda, and we did discuss it, and I, and I motioned to table it until a future...
We're just going to table it to a future meeting. We're not removing it from the, we're just tabling it, let's have a vote. All select board members in favor of tabling the solid waste discussion to April twenty-fourth, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, and not in favor, please raise your hand. All those abstaining, please raise your hand. Okay. Uh, I need one more motion, people.
I moved to adjourn this meeting.
Isaac has moved to adjourn this meeting. All select board members in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Seth. Thank you, interpreters, even though you're not here. Thank you, BCTV, thank you to the public.
Thank you for the water, too, is that, is that...